Gail, who is a longtime employee of the Southborough Schools. We wish you peace and comfort. The Planning Board will now enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, for the purposes of discussion, discussing an open meeting law complaint brought by David Ferris, exemption one, where an open meeting may be detrimental effect on the Planning Board's position. And the Chair declares, and to seek the advice of legal counsel, the Planning Board will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
So, a motion is to enter into executive session for the purposes stated by the Chair and to return to the Board's posted agenda thereafter.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Lutrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Demirio, yes.
Brashow, yes.
Hello again. We are back in open session. I'm going to remake a statement I made when we first opened because evidently it was not heard. The Board would like to offer its heartfelt condolences to Phil Jenks, who is a former member of the Planning Board and his family for the loss of their, his wife, their mother Gail, who is a longtime employee of the Southborough School System. Please accept our wishes for comfort and peace. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Proposed Accessory Dwelling Units ADU Bylaw. Colleen, could you put the, the one Oh, that's good. All right. So this is just a beginning draft and I started as it would go in the warrant with redlining what comes out of our current bylaw and adding things. And then the purple are policy questions I had. I attended a webinar today, which I learned one thing, that the EO HLC is going to promulgate regulations.
But hasn't yet.
They have not yet. There's no date certain. They're going to put out the regulations for comment like they did with 3A, then have a public hearing, and then at some time after that have a final. So that's not happening before February. I can pretty much guarantee it.
The only other thing that they said that I noted was to check with town council so that we don't run into some sort of problem in between getting it passed and it goes into effect.
Yeah.
Whoa.
They have been remarkably unhelpful. They put out this mandate with a very time-sensitive deadline. Towns are scrambling to adopt bylaws. There are three or four unanswered questions. We've worked really hard with the Attorney General's office to narrow it down to just one or two questions. And otherwise, we're really confident in the drafts that we've been helping with. But there's a few unanswered ones that the Attorney General feels that they have a handle on, but they have no idea where HLC is going to be. And it's really frustrating because I have towns voting these in now. So.
Yeah. So they're definite, they haven't defined the terms, like what's a principal dwelling unit? What's a single-family residential zone? Those are, those are undefined, which they play a fairly large part in the, so I guess we can just go through this. So we had a definition for an accessory apartment in our code, which will come out. And then that's the ADU definition from, from the, from Mass. General laws. And from section eight of the bill that they passed. The question I had, we have a definition in our code for a one-family house, which sounds kind of clunky. But if we were to change that to a single-family home, we'd have to change it 100 times in the code because it shows up. So I don't know if that makes a difference.
So that, I, I think that that would be a worthwhile exercise because it, I mean, it's why not codify at this point? And I would recommend that we make a detached single-family. Because if we're using this ADU project as, you know, a guidepost or whatever, a leader, we're not going to be using condominiums. So it might as well, we might as well be really specific. We're not going to be doing it on anything other than detached single-family homes. So why not update the whole code that way?
And just-
That's the question for the Board, I guess.
Yeah, just to chime in, all through everything I've, I've seen is primary dwelling and accessory dwelling. So you might want to consider using that terminology that is coming from the state.
Instead of single-family home, you mean?
For the purposes of ADU, yeah.
But what is a primary dwelling?
The principal, principal use on the, on the lot. So that would be the single-family home.
Okay.
As the principal dwelling. And then the accessory dwelling unit is a secondary.
Mimi, can I give my opinion?
Yep.
I had sent a copy and I know that there were, I had a lot of edits, but one, one of my comments was, the state collects data, I think based on single-family or multi-family. I know for tax purposes and other things, that's how they report. And I just think it would align better with this, you know, maybe what the state might be reporting, especially on these kinds of initiatives, if we use multi, oh, sorry, single-family rather than one-family. So I agree with Mr. Stein. I think it's worth it to make that update.
So, so Jesse, detached, freestanding, one-unit residential dwelling on a lot on which there are no other residential or commercial use buildings?
That sounds good.
Can I ask a clarifying question? What does detached actually mean? Why do you need a qualifier?
Well, like freestanding?
It's like a barn?
As opposed to a condominium unit that's attached to other things?
Or a two-family?
But it's, it's qualified as a single-family home.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just curious. Like I'm, like just wondering, do you-
It's an accessory use to the primary use.
So if somebody was coming in for an ADU, they probably wouldn't have anything else attached to the dwelling in question, such as, I don't know, a barn or a large, I don't know. That's, I guess we can drop it, the detached word.
I did hear today that they also said that they, down the line, may have, helping people do this, plans for different structures that would fit, that they would give out for free. Plans, because plans can be expensive.
Oh, plans for ADUs?
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that was, that would be for the, the property owner?
Yes. But in an effort to get this moving, that they, they are going to have some financing, either some financial money to get started, or plans. And again, that's probably going to be part of the regulations. So they weren't 100% sure on that one. But I did hear that today.
You mean homeowners would have the ability to use state grant or funding to get plans for, like building permit plans?
Mm-hmm. If they needed septic design, there's technical assistance that'll be available-
Technical assistance? Okay.
To homeowners.
Your thoughts, Mike?
Mike Robbins, we're the Zoning Board of Appeals. I, I agree with both Debbie and Jesse. I think it's definitely worthwhile to, if we're going to do this and update it, I, I feel like the language is really important to be consistent and accurate. So I would absolutely encourage to update that. I was really disappointed by today's session with the state. It was 50 minutes of, like, talking at you as opposed to-
It was the website.
Oh, yeah. And how about the millions of questions in the comments that-
That they couldn't answer.
But I digress. I had sent over some revisions, just some kind of thought process.
Yeah.
I really applaud Mimi and the Board for getting this together so really quickly. In, in some of the updates, I'm in paragraph, this is section four of, Mimi, your letter. And this is section B requirements.
Yep.
So section B requirements, and it's number three. So an ADU may be located in, one, the same as a family district, two, a building that is attached, and then three, it reads, an accessory building which shall constitute, I would add the word unattached accessory building. I think it should just be clear. I don't know if I'm, my language is making any sense or not, but just the word unattached accessory.
Just so I can see it. Can you tell me where it is on here?
Oh, God, without my glasses.
It's-
I can look up them.
Under A.
Under A.
Yep.
Under A subsection three.
Three. Yep.
An accessory building. I guess it could be attached. Oh, sorry. So I guess it could be either attached or detached, but we would want another provision for that, Mike. So.
Are you talking right here?
No, he's talking down here.
Yep.
Here.
B requirements.
Right there.
A.
Right there.
Specifically, three.
So B and A.
Three.
Subsection three.
III.
A three.
A three.
Yeah, right here.
Nope.
Go back.
Rolling too high. It's right here.
A, up.
There you go.
Right there.
Right here.
An accessory building. So I would either say either an unattached accessory building, or we would want to put, because in subsection two, it says a building that is attached. And then it just reads, then it just reads an accessory building without saying that it's unattached.
They did have a little diagram. I'm sorry.
There was a little diagram that they had explaining the different ones that are allowed, the, over the garage, in the house. Did you see that?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And then if you go to section G, and it goes, an ADU shall be subject to all development standards. I think we just want to have a little bit more specificity as far as building codes. It, right in the next section, I don't even know if G is needed, because in section H, it says it's subject to all requirements of the state building and fire code. So I don't know if G is needed. And if it is needed, we should, I think that we might want to add a little bit more meat to that bone.
Oh, so that, what, so what that is, is the development standards within our code?
I would even just-
Within the zoning district.
Yeah. I would just add a little bit of specificity with respect to that. That's all.
And Mimi, before we move on, well, we have Jay here, which we don't usually have. Jay, do you have any thoughts on what Mike is saying?
Yeah, when, I don't want to overcomplicate the process, but when, we wrote a memo to all of our clients, and, and I also sent around a sample bylaw, that, and I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with this one. There are some, I see some organizational difficulty in this, and I think we could probably simplify it. I've drafted now like 10 or 15 of these things, and I've spoken about them. I'm wondering if, and I'm not saying that my version is any better than this version or any other version, but we've been able to kind of drill down and get to the meat of this. And I'd be happy to kind of use the template that we've used, capture the material things here, not the procedural stuff, and kind of draft you guys a bylaw that kind of cuts to the chase. It won't include all the other sections that you may have to amend in your bylaws, but we can work on that a little bit. Again, I don't, I'm not saying mine is that any better or worse than any other one, but it is concise. And it does, and it does reflect the things that the Attorney General has agreed we can do. So like, we address some dimensional things and some site plan things. ADUs in pre-existing non-conforming structures are on pre-existing non-conforming lots. And we kind of have, have these things out there in a way that is promoting this form of housing development, which is important, while still protecting the zoning districts that they're in. So I'm not saying to just unnecessarily table the discussion, but I'd be happy to pick it up again with you all and-
I'm good with that.
Within the next week or so, use what you have existing, meld it to the kind of drafts that I've been working on, and get it to you for your review.
Are you finding, coming up with terminology, that you're staying consistent from one to the other?
Yeah. I mean, what I'll, what I would do too is make sure that the terminology I use is not different than the terminology you already use, unless you have to use different terminology.
Have to upgrade to the states.
Different zoning bylaws. I want to be respectful of that while still noting that if we use different terminology than the state uses, we're going to get admonished for that. So in a few key areas, we have to stick to what they've used. But in a few key areas, we have some room to be creative. For example, what we're building into these in a lot of cases is like a mini site plan review process, so not full-blown site plan review, because it's just a little housing unit. So you don't need everything, but you want to look at a few things, you know, compatibility with the main structure.
Settling.
Orientation of the main structure to the lot, the parking, you know, the, where the parking is going to be on it.
Square footage.
Screening, you know, we don't really control the square footage stuff that's all defined, but, and, and have that be subject to a quick review, so it's not too onerous for someone doing an ADU, because we're trying to promote these, but still making sure it works on the lot.
Yeah. Just to follow up, that was one of my points, was on kind of this list, is it, it speaks to site plan review. And I do think we just want to be very mindful of the fact that the legislature's been really clear that they want the process for petitioners to be simple, affordable, like, they want this to be happening. So we just want to be thoughtful about being overburdensome with respect to, you know, the process for site plan. If anything, we might want to set up a structure where it's almost to a certain degree like paint by the numbers. Like, we can elect to say, hey, you need to have one parking space, but if you didn't have a parking space, well, that would be for special permit. The other thing that we want to be mindful of, I especially think in Southborough, is going to be issues with septic and how it relates to it. And from, you know, if you're going to do an addition and add a bedroom, you'd need typically to bring your house up to septic compliance. So there's an equitable standpoint of like, hey, you're adding a bedroom, you got to update your septic. So I think that, that's probably the direction, that's my instinct. But there's also, I wish there had been, there was some comments about today, like, the cost of doing that can be prohibitive for certain people. And so are there any workarounds or anything like that on, you know, well, does that older system, if it's a 1,000-gallon tank, does that have actually capacity under what circumstances? I just don't know how far down the rabbit hole we want to go on septic, but.
So it would still have to be Title V compliant?
Oh, absolutely. But, you know, typically speaking, when you're doing a new addition, you have to bring up to modern standards.
Yeah.
For example, you know, if a house has a 1,000-gallon tank, they would say, well, that's undersized, you need to bring it up. Well, you know, that's an extra 30,000. So, and that's kind of the push and the pull.
They have to comply with Title V anyway.
That's kind of how I feel. I mean, that's just how I feel.
We do put it in a lot of these bylaws that, you know, just as a check-the-box kind of exercise, but-
That's what I think we should do, is really just lay it out.
Just put it in there.
But that way, it's unambiguous.
On single-family lots served by septic, this is, I don't think the state realizes necessarily how hard this is going to be.
That's kind of my point, where I just want to have as, as simple and as clear. So like, if you were reading this, you know what you need to do. Like, okay, I'm going to need to update my septic.
So is your understanding, Jay, because there's no definition of what a single-family zoning district is, is that anything that a single-family home is?
Yes. Our interpretation is that it's any district where a single family is allowed.
That's my understanding.
It's generally only going to exclude industrial, I mean, in most towns, industrial or a pure business district, or maybe-
So here, it would only exclude industrial park. Everything else would be?
Yeah. But likely in many of the business or the village districts that we run into, those lots are going to be, also be non-conforming, because they're generally older. And like the business and the village districts, and we insert a clause where it's that you still got to get a special permit because the lots are non-conforming. Or in the case of detached, you would need a variance.
And the, the other question on detached, so the, the little diagrams show like a detached garage with a ADU on the top. And we have that 17-foot limitation on-
And you can retain that.
Okay.
You can retain a height. We have, and one or two towns have done a single story. If it's, if it's detached, most have done two-story as a max.
That's what I've seen.
And then where there's a conversion of like garage space or something like that, we've had some provisions that shall not expand the envelope. So we, we've done it a few different ways. So I think that there's a way to manage this in a way that gets some, the handful of housing units that we're looking for. It's not going to be a ton of housing units, no matter what, especially in a town that doesn't have much in the way of sewer. So, but there's a way to make it easily digestible in just a couple pages. So.
I think Westboro, they're in the process of updating their ADU bylaws. But as a practitioner, I go through their list, and it's literally like, here's one through 15, these are the requirements. Boom, 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 boom. And it's just, you either meet the criteria or you don't. Obviously, they'll need to redo that. Their square footages are off, they had to be owner-occupied, things of that nature. But, you know, I-
They have to remove that out of there.
They have, they are going to have to remove that out. But the clarity for what they have is, is really simple from a, you know, if you just Google it quickly, it comes right up. And you go, okay, this is what you need to get an ADU in Westboro. And it's that type of ease and consistency where it's like, well, wait a minute, what does site plan review mean? Like, now I've got to go to planning just to figure out what I need to do. No. It needs to conform to X, Y, and Z. Here's the parking, here's this, here's that.
So Mimi, can I just say that, that I know that you put a lot of work into drafting this?
I stole it.
Okay. Well, I just, I, again, I want to thank you for the work that you did, but I would like-
With some good legal work.
I would, I would like to, you know, as a member of the Board, I think it'd be great to take Jay up on the offer and, and, you know, utilize his expertise in this. That would be great.
We talked about this a week too early.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
The good news is you have time, right?
Yeah.
Well, we're on it. I think, I think a lot of towns still aren't. You could tell on the chat.
Well, I mean, but we have a March town meeting, so.
April this year.
April this year, that's right.
Yep. Just a quick question that came in, and something we-
Just a quick question that came in, and something we discussed with zoning board, was rules and regs around using accessory dwelling units for Airbnb.
So we can exclude that?
Absolutely.
That we can add a prohibition of that?
And that's expressed in the statute.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
So I think we might just want to define, if they define...
They've defined it Chapter sixty-three G, sixty-four G.
Well, we actually expand on that, because the statute itself doesn't talk about the days, but the accepted language that we use is, shall not be short-term rental as defined in that, or otherwise be rented for under thirty-one days.
Yeah.
Is, is the, is what we put in there in the criteria.
So, Mimi, would we be targeting January sixth as the first public hearing?
Yep. I mean, obviously, we're not going to have public hearings in December for this, so...
Sure.
I mean, that's, I think that that's borderline overkill, but better safe than sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is the board in agreement to let Jay do it?
Yeah.
And I think it's great, though, Jesse, too, on that point, if we start the public hearings in, in January, we have two meetings in December, so we have enough time to, you know, get feedback from ZBA and, and whatnot.
Case firm is...
You agree with that, Mike?
Oh, totally. That sounds great.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Ted Gowdy, Fourteenth Little Neck Lane. My understanding is the new state bylaw has a cap at nine hundred square feet. The town has different criteria of what's allowed by special permit, and so you have this hierarchy here where the next applicant, it wouldn't be allowed underneath the state bylaw, but is going to be allowed as a special permit on the local. So...
So then...
You'd be better off with a, with a bylaw that allows, complies with the state, and then you say, all right, if you comply here, great, and if you don't, you slide over to this other bylaw.
Yeah, you can always seek a variance from the ZBA.
But see, the criteria for variance is different, so the next project would not, would not meet the criteria for variance, I'm guessing.
Ted, I think the goal is to get it all under one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One bylaw.
You just end up having to layer it, that...
I, I think the goal is not to have confusing layers.
So currently, our, the special permit will not comply with the state statute when it goes into effect in February. So we're working now to come up with a byright bylaw, so we're going to get rid of this special permit, and then comply with what the state...
There's going to be a small gap with, that we, where we won't be able to enforce certain provisions of our existing bylaw.
Right. So if you look at, you know, you look at the square footage requirement in B, it caps at nine hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Or half of what you're...
Well, it's half, half of the primary structure, or nine hundred, whichever is smaller.
Which is nine hundred square.
Not larger than nine hundred.
So if you're larger than nine hundred, you don't comply.
You could get a special permit.
Well, if, if...
That's not, that's not...
That's not a byright. So anything nine hundred or other is byright.
Right.
Anything over, we can ask for a special permit.
Or we could just not allow it.
I think for now, because we want to stay with the majority vote at town meeting, I think we decided to not go for the larger.
Right.
So then if you, then you're actually restricting, it's becoming more restrictive in terms of the square footage basis.
But it's easier to do.
It's easier to try.
Just to be clear.
My first house was nine hundred and fifty-two.
I understand. The next applicant is proposing eleven thousand, eleven hundred forty, so it would not be allowed.
Good thing they're here now.
Can, can I ask a point, though? Because I think what Mr. Gowdy's bringing up is pretty relevant when we think about Southborough and being whatever, ninety percent residential, that the houses, most of the houses are well over four thousand square feet, or maybe, I don't even know what the, the three thousand square feet. So if you did what our current special permit is, is the twenty percent or twenty-five percent maximum, so, again, we're in a privileged community, but are we being overly restrictive by complying with the nine hundred, would be, would be willing to do something different, where we have been for years by special permit to go up to this different?
I think, so, that's possible, but I think in our first discussion, we decided we were going to stick with the state statute, so when we go to town meeting, we can get the approval by a simple majority, not two-thirds. We can go back and amend that, and for the two-thirds, to make that larger by special permit.
I see, okay, that was...
And we're going to have to go back anyway, because, because if our definitions don't comply with the guidelines, we don't know when those guidelines are coming out. So in all likelihood, if this goes to annual town meeting, the final guidelines won't be out.
You know, some of the, some of the rationale for the state on this is, because it, it seems a little counterintuitive in some respects, but what they're trying to do, because these aren't income restricted or price restricted, is keep them at a reasonable size that are actually serving as a, a small unit for just a couple or a single person, or an elderly person, because price per square foot goes, then goes up, so they're, they're actually trying to capture a specific segment of the, of the marketing. One of the other statutes that they've been working on is that small home exemption to the merger doctrine, where you can do an eighteen-hundred-fifty-square-foot home, so they're trying to adopt statutes that are addressing different segments of the population to address unmet housing needs. So I think they're, they purposely wanted these to be small. Now, they also wanted this statute to pass, and they knew there was some sensitivity on size, certainly, but they wanted this to, to focus on a very specific kind of population group. So that, that I think was part of their goals, was to keep it at that smaller size.
Can you bring Doris over?
Jay, as the Middleton example, one of MTC's drafts, because I've...
That's mine, but I, I've actually revised it a little since, so I'm going to be probably basing it on a lot of what I have in the Middleton one that I forwarded you, but I'm going to customize it based on what I see elsewhere in your bylaws, to capture what you already have a preference for, for accessories, so, but it'll look in format a lot like that.
Okay, so the planning board knows there was a copy of that in the Dropbox?
Okay.
As a sample.
Hi, Doris. Did you want to...
Good evening, ma'am. I just want to make sure we don't have quorum on the ZBA, and I just saw Mike in, and it's me, is anyone else on?
Don't see anyone else. I didn't see...
Okay.
Oh, there is a David. Oh, yeah.
He said he was...
Yeah.
Can you bring David over? David.
Three people on.
The David.
It happened for...
I don't know which David that is.
Hi, no, this is, this is David Williams from the ZBA.
Oh, so you do have a quorum.
Yeah.
They're not deliberating.
Well... There are some, attending another board's meeting is fine, attending another board's meeting and kind of deliberating or speaking about a subject matter that would be germane to your jurisdiction gets a little stickier.
Doris, David, don't say anything.
Well, I think, you guys, you're posted, aren't you?
I believe we are, yeah.
Oh, you're posted?
Yeah.
All right, then you're fine. I didn't know they were posted.
Yeah.
We just have to procedurally, David, don't we have to call meeting to order or something?
No, no. You're, if you're posted, you're fine.
Okay, that's, I'm just double-checking.
I love it.
Always safe.
So, David and Doris, are you okay to let Jay write a bylaw?
I absolutely do not have a problem with that.
No, I had some comments, Mimi, I think you've seen them, or they, they seem to be edited into this document, what the, I can see the document. I have no issue with Jay making a stab at this. I, I did attend the informational meeting this morning.
Quote-unquote.
Yeah, that was, there were, there were a hundred and twenty comments in an hour. So we're under the gun with the timeline, of course, and, yeah, definitely have Jay do it, because we have definitional issues. I also had the same issues that I think someone else just brought up, which had to do with the square footage, but I do recall us saying, as important as that is, it probably is going to be under special permit, if you're over nine hundred square feet, we'd be pressed to tackle it at the spring town meeting. But I had definitional issues, but I can hold them until Jay makes cut at it, it's probably more productive.
Okay.
I, I just had, I had one question based on a draft, and that is the, I think there, I don't know if you still have it in there, but you had language about no more than three people could live there, and I'm curious why you would put that in there.
Part of the state regulations.
Oh, not the state, is that a state regulation?
Well, so far, what they have, it's, it's no more than two bedrooms and no more than three people.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize that, thank you.
Is that in the statute for ADU? Because I didn't think bedrooms were in ADU, only kitchen and bathroom.
I, I read it someplace recently, it's part of, you know...
Doris, or David, I just, I took, I think, Arlington, West Newbury, Greenfield, and somebody else, and I just threw together what they had, so I must have pulled that from someplace, but it's all...
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I would just think that you're...
All very rough, drafty, but Jay's going to fix it.
Yeah, since, since we're... Thank you for that, Jay, by the way. Since, since we, you know, we touched on the subject of, of the septic, I mean, that by its nature, you know, defines how many bedrooms you can have, so, I mean, if it follows the state guidance, that's fine with me, but that was only my, that was my only thought is, well, if you're limited by the septic and the square footage, you know, do you really need to make that statement?
It's a good question.
Yeah.
David, I had a, a general concern with the definition, where we put family in at the top of the document, and then that, again, refers to how many people. I have read code in other towns where you can't have any more than six non-related blood relatives in a single-family home. I, I, do we, we have to use the word "single-family," we have to use the word "family," Jay, just an off-the-cuff question. It's really, it's more of a dwelling and probably more appropriate...
But I just, I just wonder...
Than the number of people, yeah, I don't know.
If "single-family" is by itself, its own definition, you don't have to get tangled up in defining what a family is, is, a single-family...
We do define family in our code.
Okay.
I don't want to get tangled up at all, I was going to drop the word "family," it's just a single, I, I don't know what else to call it, a single occupancy, I, I don't know. What, what some of the codes that you want to prevent is, and it was mentioned maybe two meetings ago, you know, would you really want ten people in a three-bedroom house? And that's always been a lot of resistance, you know, now and again, in putting apartments on detached or attached into a, a home. Just thought, it's, Jay, it'd be very exciting, thank you for doing this.
Yes.
He may regret it.
Very good. Anything else on this? Anything else, David, Doris? Mike, thank you guys very much.
No, I'm good, thank you.
I'm really good, thank you.
To be continued.
Mimi, do they need to adjourn?
Did, before you...
They didn't, they didn't call in session.
Before you adjourned, did we decide, last point is, the public hearing?
That's the goal, yeah. Oh, one other thing from today, the, the state has not yet decided whether these ADUs are going to be used to count as dwelling units as far as our SHI is concerned, as of yet.
I thought I heard that today, that was one of...
That they haven't decided.
Well, they, what I had seen was, and I may be wrong, but it was, the requirements to be that are the same as the SHI list, so you have to go through...
Affordable, so affordable is, but the question was whether...
With the deed restriction and everything else, so if the...
And it goes to the lottery and all that good stuff, so that...
If the...
But the owner has to sign up for that.
But the, the question was whether these additional ADUs, and I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference in Southborough, whether they're going to count as our residential units for our ten percent.
Oh, no.
The denominator, you mean?
Yeah.
And that may be something we can work on when they have the public hearings.
Well, yeah, so they said, that hasn't been decided yet, but I don't know, that, that probably won't, it's not like we're going to get a thousand of them here, I wouldn't think, but whatever.
So, Jay, we don't, we don't need to adjourn, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm not too concerned.
Okay.
All right, thank you, you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, good evening.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jason, if you don't mind, since we as well. Thanks, good to see you guys.
You too.
Thank you.
See you guys soon.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 250 Turnpike Road, Contractors Yard, major site plan approval. Karina, you want to bring us up to date?
Just to get you up to speed. So the last public hearing was on October 21st, was public hearing number four, was continued to this evening, November 4th. On October 28th, I received a submission number four for the project with revised plans dated October 28th, 2024, and a revised waiver request. We had not yet received the Fussin' O'Neill review for submission three at that point, but the next, on October 30th, the planning board was provided submission number four, and then on October 31st, we received Fussin' O'Neill's review of submission number three, which was provided to the applicant and to the planning board. We also distributed submission number four to the town departments, and... And the planning board. Yeah, I already said that, yeah, and the planning board. And we received one comment letter back this afternoon from the building department, which was also distributed to the planning board members. I'm not sure they had a chance to review that, but it was a short letter. We also provided the applicant with a form to request to extend the public hearing, action deadline for the planning board pending this, and we received feedback from Attorney Banon that they would discuss that at this evening's meeting, pending the discussions. So you should have a Fussin' O'Neill review letter of submission number three, planning board should have submission number four, that has been revised, and that's where we are.
Thank you, welcome.
For the record, my name is George Banon, Assistant General Counsel with the Ferris Development Group, and with me is Brian Charville, General Counsel and Chief Operating Officer for Ferris Development Group. Before I begin, Karina, I just want to make one small correction. I believe we supplied submission number four on October 28th, Monday, October 28th. I think you had said 30th.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it is October 28th, submission number four, hard copies and PDFs at about 4:00 PM, 4:15 PM.
Thank you. And as Karina had mentioned, we have, since our last hearing, we have submitted revised plans, an updated waivers list, and comments back from our engineer, James Taitrell, in response to Fussin' O'Neill's second comment letter dated October 14th, I believe. And we received Fussin' O'Neill's third comment letter on October 31st, we have not responded to that just yet, but the comments have somewhat been repetitive, and I don't know if, at this point, they need response to. I'd like to start off by pointing out a few changes in the site plans. On the site plan itself, Sheet S2, reflective of our conversation at the last hearing, we have expanded the limit of work area to reflect more accurately the area that's being disturbed. area to, um, reflect more accurately the area that's being disturbed. On the plan, it shows 47,000 square feet is being disturbed.
And that's within the blue dashes, right?
Correct. On sheet D5, which is a detail sheet, we have correctly, we have changed the project description to more accurately reflect when construction is to begin. Ms. Houlihan, thank you. And we've also, um, removed the waiver section that had previously stated that no waivers are being requested. On sheet L9, which is the landscape plan, we've removed 125 Parkerville from the site, or at least any changes being made to it. Um, we've also removed about four white spruce trees on the south side of the privacy fence that Chair Luttrell had pointed out were in the no disturb area, the 20-foot no disturb area. So the trees that you see remaining are, uh, outside of the no disturb area. In addition to these changes, we have asked for four waivers, and I can briefly go through them. The first waiver we're asking for is a waiver from having to, uh, show trees of six-inch caliper or greater. And I had cited at the last hearing that would be unduly burdened some to make the applicant do that, depict them on the plan as the south side of the parcel is a heavily forested area. And to corroborate that, I've included photos of the, uh, south side of the parcel showing how heavily forested it is. The second waiver is a waiver from the zoning district boundary line that Chair Luttrell and I have discussed at length. To the extent that the grassy pavers are not considered landscaping, uh, by this board, I'll point to the photos once again to show the, uh, forested area to the south side of the parcel that, that has existing screening and buffer to it. Further, we're going to include the 11 white spruce trees on the southern side of the, uh, privacy fence to, in addition to add to more buffer and screening.
So, um, sorry, just to clarify, so those photos are on the adjoining parcel? Those are not trees that are on this, the parcel that this site plan is?
They are, those trees are on this, on, uh, 250 Turnpike, this parcel, this site. The detention bases, detention basins on this site?
Okay.
Is that what you're asking? If it's on 250 Turnpike?
Yeah, or the, the adjoining parcel that was split off.
No, the trees, the trees depicted in photo, and I wanna say the first 12 photos are trees taken from the existing parking lot, and the trees you see directly in front of you are on 250 Turnpike, the site that we're talking about right now.
So where are those trees?
Which trees, I apologize.
In the photos?
Oh, those, those, those trees are in and around the detention basin. Yes, they are.
Okay, all right, so, go on.
Okay. The next waiver we ask for is a waiver from the parking space dimensional standards as to existing parking spaces only. You'll notice that some of the parking spaces are less than the nine-and-a-half-foot, uh, width that's required by today's Southborough zoning bylaw. We do not wish to alter them, so we seek a variance, uh, to leave the existing parking spaces at the width that they are, currently are. Lastly, we ask for a waiver from the lower-impact development regulations. We are subject to LID due to a nominal triggering of the one-acre disturbance. As a practical matter, we achieved most of LID's goals based on what we've done to improve the site, uh, as far as stormwater. For example, we're taking existing impervious surface, and we're putting a proposed contractors' building on it, which will capture every inch of stormwater. It will go down a gutter and infiltrate into the ground. We've also proposed grass pavers to the rear of the building, which will also act as infiltration where there wasn't before. And there is also a new landscaped area at the entrance, near the entrance of the, um, lot, that will also act as, uh, further infiltration. We're asking, I wanna reiterate that we are basically meeting almost all the goals LID is trying to achieve. We're nominally triggering, triggering the one-acre disturbance, and to, and to make us apply for LID at this point would unduly burden us and unduly delay us because it's gonna require a new public hearing, unfortunately. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
So, Karina, if we were to waive the LID, but yet somehow, in our order of conditions, hold the proponent to the standards just laid out by counsel, that they achieve the goals of LID without inhering to the LID process, is that possible technically, in your opinion? And how would we enforce?
To waive a bylaw?
Well, I'm just.
So, there's that first question, if you can waive the bylaw, number one. And then secondly, depending on what they're proposing, if it is technically accurate based on the plans, um, that they're providing, so it would need technical review to prove that and to confirm that they are meeting the LID requirements.
I guess what I'm asking is, like, could our chief, like, code enforcement officer actually monitor that on this, on the planning board's behalf and hold, hold that condition?
I don't wanna speak for him.
Okay, that's something that I would, in order for me to consider, I mean, waiving, asking for a waiver of LID, I don't remember, since I've been on this board, any proponent getting that waiver. So, that would be an extraordinary thing for the board to do, and we would, I'm sure, be looking for the right, you know, protections, because we, the LID's in the code for a reason, and for us to just arbitrarily waive, you know, such a critical standard would be, um, very much, you know, very out of the ordinary, and I'm not sure how that would work. That's my main thing right now, um, thanks.
Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you for making the adjustments to the plans and for noting them. I have just a couple of questions. So, on the S2, the site layout plan, there is a, there are, um, indications of the light poles, and it says, "Move existing light to here, move existing light to here." And so, I guess, when I think about, so you've included the blue line to not include the moving the existing light. And I guess I don't understand, so the blue line is the encompassed area of soil disturbance? So that, that light, even though you're only moving it, it's cemented in, so it's quite a bit of disturbance? So can, can you help me?
Yes, Ms. Houlihan, I'll tell you, the moving of the existing lights that you see are actually part of the 2022 site plan that were approved. So those, those disturbances have already been approved in a prior site plan.
While it's approved in a prior site plan, um, I gotta say, the site plan we approved is not what was actually constructed. The site, the sign was different, you had two garage bays, so I, I can't actually trust the existing is actually what we approved, to be, to be honest with you. And you didn't move those light poles in the, in the prior edition. So, if you moved the light poles in the prior edition,
Mm-hmm.
I would recognize your point, that would have been included. But you're moving them in this edition, which makes me state that this limit of soil disturbance now moves into this area that you don't recognize being disturbed.
If I may also say.
How would this soil not be disturbed?
If I may say, Ms. Houlihan, um, we are clear, we're over the one acre at this point, which is the purpose of depicting the limit of work. Uh, I, I could go, we, we could nitpick the plan like that. I mean, I, I don't think there are any more issues, but we could nitpick the plan like that and say, oh, this was supposed to be in the limit of work, but the limit of work is already over an acre. It doesn't, it doesn't make any substantive, it doesn't have any substantive effect as to the limit of work at this point, and its effects on whether we adhere to LID or subject to LID, rather. So, I could say, I, I don't wanna have an argument with you over that some, that, you know, it really may not matter if that answers your question, but the 2022 site plan approved the moving of that light pole. We currently have a bond with the town, um, holding us accountable to move the light pole, as, as well as a few other things, too. So, we're being held to that 2022 site plan, and we're just trying to be transparent with the board, because it hasn't been done yet, but it will be done eventually, per the 2022 site plan. It just, and we're rolling it all into this site plan. We're trying to mesh both site plans together as best we can.
And I appreciate that, and I, I agree with your point. It's not worth it to nitpick, but I would also recognize that when I, like, when I literally draw your green line, and we can see it a little bit better with my green, um, highlighter, it's really hard for me to believe that construction vehicles can do a limit of disturbance that's so narrowly defined. So I feel like in true transparency and partnering with you, like, the honest, the honesty of it is it's not just narrowly over an acre. I think it's significantly over an acre. And so I, I wouldn't be in favor of a bylaw, um, condition that would be waived in, in this case. And I, I, it's hard for me to, to recognize these areas of such small disturbance of soil. And this is an important, it's an important place, there's a lot of tributaries, there's a lot of, like, just natural things that are happening in this particular area that I just need to be very sure of, and lower-impact development is important in this neighborhood. And so I, I just wanna draw that when I see all of this, it just doesn't feel right that, that what, the transparency and the partnership, if we're truly trying to do the right thing for the town, and we're trying to do the right thing for you as a proponent to get this through, that we just, like, be honest about what's in front of us. And so that's my perspective.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Ms. De Maria.
Hi to you both. Well, I think Marnie just said what I was feeling as well, but I, I think last time we asked you to do the calculations, and I was wondering, um, on the, um, on the disturbance, did you do the calculations?
Yes, they're on there. If you look.
Forty-seven thousand.
Yeah, if you look on S2, sheet S2,
Yep.
next to Glenn Fireburg's name, to the left of it, you'll see in blue, it says "limit of work," and then it says 47,000.
You can't see it on those.
No, uh, the big, okay, thank you, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Maria.
Bracio, sorry. Thank you. So I, I don't know that I can add anything other than, um, to what Marnie said. I, I agree LID is an important part of our bylaw, and I hesitate to waive that. I, I will say, you know, through this process, um, there wasn't any waivers, and, and now that we're towards the end, and I understand there's modifications being made, um, I'm just concerned about making sure that we meet all the requirements of LID. Thank you.
I don't think we can, my opinion, I don't think we can waive LID. This bylaw shall be applicable to all new develops, and redevelopment. And then it says, "A LID special permit shall be required from the planning board for the following. Any activity subject to major site plan review, any activity that will result in soil disturbance of one acre or more." So, this meets it on both counts.
I would argue that this board has the authority to waive any provision, um, bylaw that they have in front of them, with exceptions, but I think this would fall under one of those that would be able to be waived.
So, I'm not taking sides in, or making any value judgment on the changes. It seems like there's, and I'm parachuting into this late, um, but that's not true. This board doesn't, would not right, wrong, or indifferent, and this is how the bylaws drafted, maybe it'd be a good idea to add that to site plan, that they could waive the requirement for LID. It doesn't exist. This, which would mean it would need a use variance, which you don't have. So, there's no provision under the zoning act or under these zoning bylaws, and some towns do that under site plan review, give generous waiver authority in the interest of efficiency and expediency. And maybe that would be awesome here, because of all the, the work and the back and forth, but it doesn't exist. So, I think people have outlined a, a few of their concerns with it, but regardless of that, if someone was asking me, can it be waived? It cannot, and there's nothing under this bylaw or the zoning act that you could point to, to stand for the contrary proposition.
And I have some other comments. Landscaping, there are non-natives in there, you've added a Japanese cherry tree. The white spruce is not native in Massachusetts, but it's native in northern New England, so I can, think we can get along with that. But the two, uh, St. John's warts are not native to New England. Also, there's a, um, an SC on the plans over in front of Freiberg, which isn't in the planting table, so I don't know what that is.
Thank you.
So, is, so 174-13F, the 20-foot buffer along the non-residential property along the full-length boundary with the residential? It says, "Planting sufficiently dense to adequately screen adjacent residential properties," which, um, grass pavers do not. So I can understand, I mean, there's wetlands there, you can't go planting through the wetlands, but you can certainly do a better job with that border than the 11 trees that you reduced, there were 14 or something the last time. There's also a requirement, 174-13D, for side and rear, um, 10-foot landscape buffer. So the previous site plan, there was a privacy fence, so that held, that was screening, but now it's a chain-link fence, which is not a screen, it's not a privacy fence, it doesn't screen anything. So we need landscape screening.
There's no intent to change the fence that's been installed. So if there needs to be a plan update made that reflects a privacy fence rather than simple chain-link, we'll do that.
Oh, okay.
There is no intent to change the fences there.
All right. It says chain-link on the plan, and the previous plan said privacy. Oh, also, there were, um, landscaping on the previous site plan that wasn't bonded because it was planted and then removed. There were two trees that are missing. An American filbert and a hornbeam that aren't, haven't been put back on the plan. In the parking, I'm, I'm perplexed. So the approved plan in December 2022, there's a stamped plan that shows the parking calculations of 36 spaces at nine-and-a-half by 18. And now you're saying that they're not nine-and-a-half by 18?
Correct. Some, some existing spaces, some, are under the nine-and-a-half-foot width.
So.
But they've always been existing. We haven't altered them in any way.
So how do, how did you submit a stamped plan of parking spaces, 36 parking spaces at nine and a half by 18, if they didn't exist?
Well, we're not saying that they don't exist. We just, we have to check with engineer to confirm whether they do or do not.
Well, he submitted a stamped plan.
Right. But he's not here tonight, but he can verify that or not.
Well, you're, you're saying in your waivers that those parking spaces are nine by 18?
Not every one. He just said that they're a varying dimensional width.
So it sounds to me like you don't have parking. You don't have the required parking, although your previous plan said you did.
If you'd like for us to measure each space, then we'll pay a surveyor to do that.
You submitted stamped plans, so this is what we have and that's what you showed on the plans.
And I'm standing by what our engineer submitted. He's just not here tonight.
Then, then you don't need the waiver, I guess. Also, the loading space is not supposed to be within 50 feet of a residential district?
What bylaw section is that?
Under parking and loading.
What's the section number?
Do you have your phone with you? Perhaps you can look it up on the website? Look it up? Okay. I think you mentioned it in your waivers, 174-12, under number three, waiver request for dimensional requirements.
And then the, the sign you show on the plans says an existing sign? But that's a little disingenuous because the existing sign was nine by nine by eight?
The sign was changed, however, the reason why a permit wasn't required for the sign that was, the new sign, I'll call it, was because it was adherent to zoning dimensional standards. On my, on the plan, I have 10 by 15, which actually may be inaccurate. There's a zoning interpretation out to the building commissioner right now as to whether the foundation of the sign goes towards the total area. And if it doesn't, then the sign is compliant and this size, this, the dimensions on the plan will change and it'll be zoning compliant.
Okay.
I'm just trying to be transparent.
Well, so transparent would be, so the, there's approved site plan in December of 2022, you said the sign wasn't going to change. You were just going to put the name on and then a new sign showed up. So that's not really being transparent.
New sign's going to show up, this, from what it was before, there's going to be a Beehive, a new Beehive sign. There was a new Beehive sign installed.
Right. But you told the board that you were just going to add the name to the old nine by nine by eight sign. Now there's a whole new big sign there. That's not the old sign.
Well, with this site plan, we're hoping to get the new sign approved.
Okay. But it's not, it's not an existing sign. It's a new, non-compliant sign.
It's existing as when the survey was taking, taken. I can't not put the accurate dimensions of the sign that's there today.
So one of the comments from the building commissioner is the garage in front of those bay doors, bollards are required? Oh, so you saw the, the?
We received the letter today.
Okay. And the floor drains?
Correct. Or it says bollards or floor drains, if I'm not mistaken.
No, no, no. Two different.
Yeah, if you want me to clarify?
Please.
To the, my, best of my understanding is that the building commissioner indicated that if you're going to use those bays to bring vehicles into the building, it's a requirement that you have floor drains that are tied into an oil gas separator unit and then affluent to the drainage system. If you are not bringing or intending to use vehicles inside the building or allow vehicles inside, then you would have to provide bollards so that cars cannot go into the garage. So it's one or the other.
It's one or the other. Correct.
And be aware that it's, your parking calc is for warehouse.
Yes.
Did that cover that, Mimi? Anything, did I miss anything on that?
Can I just answer the previous question about the loading?
Sure.
So it's, Mr. Charville, it's 174-12C, dimensional requirement, section one, loading.
Thank you.
So I think that would require a waiver. It says if located within 50 feet of a resident district or if used frequently at night, loading spaces shall be enclosed.
Thank you.
Could I ask the board, in a set of revised plans, would a sign detail be required? If, 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 is the, is the board interested in a detail of the sign? That is quasi-proposed but existing? In other words, the new sign is?
I think it's in our, in site plan.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. It is a requirement. So I'm just asking if the board would be looking for that as well?
Uh, yes.
And it's not to impact the building permit, but the planning board usually likes, like, they see elevations in architectural plans. The sign being included allows them to understand what would appear on the site.
Sure.
And makes like a document of that. So hopefully it's compliant, it turns out compliant and then you just provide a detail.
Not a problem. Thank you, Karina.
And did you finish all your questions?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to also clarify with this question, does the board, it's my impression that you want to see an accurate limit of disturbance? So remember to include the abrevieties that are along the detention basin?
Yes.
That were accidentally left out. And then I would also point out that the other lights that are being relocated on the site plan?
Include those as well?
Yeah, because there was only one light, I believe, that was going to be moved over by the Freiberg property as part of the original.
Correct.
But I think there's a few others along Route 9 that you were moving as well. I see notes, unless those are erroneous notes.
Sorry, along Route 9?
Yeah, up near the western side of the property, somewhere near the sign. It says relocate light, relocate light. If you look almost in front of?
I see them.
The west side of the building, right there. And I thought I saw another one somewhere, the one over by Freiberg's property.
Yes, that's the one Ms. Houlihan identified. And then the one that you were just speaking about is at the entrance to the Beehive facility?
Yeah, near the sign area. So, and there might be another one. It's just too small to look at this, but I would just check to make sure that you accurately reflect the lid for record so that in the future, if somebody questions it, you're protected as well because you identified it on the plan accurately. Then they, there won't be a question or there'll be a defendable question, answer to that.
So as far as the waiver for lid, is the board in agreement that that's, can't be done?
Right. I mean, we're very grateful that Town Council is present tonight to bring that immediate clarification.
So we need lid. Which I would think if we, yeah, if an application's filed for lid and plans to comply with lid, we would need those reviewed by a peer reviewer, which our peer reviewer will not work with Ferris Development. So that's going to add more time to find someone else.
We're currently pretty close to getting a consultant, a new consultant. We're at the end stages of making a selection.
It's excellent news.
So that could be helpful for your goal.
Yes.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So I know the sign continues to be a little bit of a challenge for me, to be very honest, for the site that was planned and approved. We've talked about the sign for a very long time. I don't want to beat the horse. But in our code, which is 174-11 sign, section five, it says the maximum area of sign allowed and it says 10% of the facade of the business establishment. Can you guys do the calculations of that to make sure?
A wall facade sign. I believe what's at question right now, monument sign, a standing sign.
Okay, standing signs.
I think it has a maximum in that district of 100 square feet.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I think currently, including the basis, 150.
Yeah.
So zoning officer, building commissioner is making a determination for them right now at some point when he gets to it.
So that would require a ZBA special permit application and request, right?
Yeah.
And so if we make it through all the process, it would be part of our condition, not that, that they get the approval for that permit. Although that might happen by the time the lid gets through. So our building commissioner will be making that assessment. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So anything else? Anyone in the public? Anyone online have any questions or comments?
Six attendees, no hands raised.
So I have a question of, just logistically, where do we go from here exactly with this application?
We'll agree to a continuance to the one that Colleen had provided to me earlier, which would be continue the hearing to December 6th and a date to act, I'm sorry, continue the hearing to December 2nd and a date to act by December 6th.
There you go, Jesse.
There's your cheat sheet.
I wonder, George, again, just on the logistics side, just in for, to keep you from having to maybe ping pong back and forth, that if you are coming in with a lid and if it's foreseeable that there could be some plan changes there, if and when you make a decision to do that, if you buy December, because you have some time to think about it, you may want to sync the two up just to make sure that when the site plan review gets approved, it matches identically. So I would hate to see you guys get through the lid stuff with a nice project, have it differ from an approved site plan and then have to reopen a site plan proceeding. And we actually talked to Karina about maybe a goal of ours under the bylaws that where both are required, that we sync up those timeframes anyway.
Sure.
Through the bylaw, it's not in there, but for your benefit, you may want to at least consider it. You know, you don't have to do that today, obviously, just because then you're getting the same approval could be on literally one document, approval for both. So just a thought, so.
I appreciate that, Jay. Thank you.
Before we make any, they, we just talked about waivers, like, there's that additional waiver on loading that we would have to have you ask for. The, either it's an enclosed one, the one I just gave you, the C-1. So I think you'd have to add that to your list of waivers. And then I think we, we talked about the parking, right? Is to be able to clarify the, the parking so that you may or may not need the waiver if this, if they are nine and a half feet.
I wonder if the 50-foot is, is a waiver? I mean, you can waive things within, that are at home and your subdivision, your site plan regs, but if it's in the loading section, I took a quick peek, I didn't see a waiver provision there on the 50 feet.
Hold on. Give me one second to load it up again.
Mimi, while, while Marnie's looking for that, can I just ask, is December 2nd realistic to hear this, knowing that we need to get a peer reviewer in, they've got it the holiday with Thanksgiving week and, you know, giving them ample time to be able to review and you submit a lid application? I'm just asking the question, do you think that's realistic?
Ms. Brashio, we, we'll need to have internal discussions as to how to move forward as well.
Totally fine. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to streamline things a little bit to make it, you know? Thank you.
So you're reading it now. I read it as, it has to, if used frequently at night, loading spaces, if located within 50 feet of a resident district or if used frequently at night, loading spaces shall be enclosed. So does that mean because it's within 50, you can't ask for a waiver to not be enclosed or it must be enclosed?
It's, it's in the same category of, it's not married to your site plan, so it's a separate requirement. So you don't have, I don't see anything in jurisdiction, jurisdictionally, under site plan approval about waiving parking requirements or loading requirements. If there was, then it would be fine, but I didn't see anything jumping out at me. And we see that frequently, but again, I didn't see it here.
So I, I'm, I'm not understanding what you're saying. So you're saying that they have?
Needs to be enclosed.
That, okay.
Or 50 feet away from?
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate.
Or a variance.
Oh, okay.
Because that is dimensional.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I was not following.
And I just wanted to mention, it's, to me, the importance of that landscape buffer. I did go over there and there are no trees between the fence and the other side of the detention basin. They've all been cut down. There's some little bit of shrub on the, by the fence, but there, there's one tree, but that's it. So I don't know where those pictures were taken from. There are, on the other, on the other side of the detention basin, there are trees, but that's in the other lot.
Sometimes what the engineer will do to help the planning board to understand that where those photos are taken, they might do an exhibit, a small exhibit that just even hand drawn, a circle on the plan and the direction the photo was taken. That might help here.
You have to go to a microphone, sorry.
Colleen, can you put the pictures up perhaps? They're part of the waiver. And it's at the end, at like, at the fifth page.
Do you want to bring the pictures up?
Oh, the pictures up and then Mark over?
Oh, Mark. He can, he can speak.
Hi, Mr. Davis, if you could identify yourself?
Sure. Mark Davis, 13 Skyler Drive. I know I've written to the board, but since Town Council's there, I did, I did want to just ask one question.
Sure.
We have an industrial building that's being proposed with the rear of the building right on the industrial zone edge. Now we have a 50-foot setback. I think that's the setback on an industrial zone. It's in the residential area. If I go into Residence A, I don't see a permitted use of a setback from an industrial zone is permitted in a Residential A district. So I'm beginning to wonder whether this in fact complies with zoning. And I'm not aware of any other spot in town where we have allowed a building to be right up on the edge of the zone with its setbacks in the wrong zone. So I'd, I'd be interested to see if I'm the only one who feels that way. So I'd be interested to see if I'm the only one who feels that way.
I need the bylaw. Which bylaw provision talks about the setback?
Well, each zone, as I've read it, each zone has its uses, and each zone has its use regulations. And then each zone has a little qualifier in there that if the use is not listed in the use is permitted, then it's not a permitted use in that zone.
There's two industrial districts, ID or IP?
ID.
ID. So what does it talk about from the residential district? I just see a 50-foot setback.
174-dash, it's right after 174-46, where it talks about going into a more restrictive zone. I gotta find it, hold on. Not as fast here, town code.
That's not it.
That's not it?
174-6?
It's the one, it's, hold on, I'll tell you. Conflict of classifications? It is, um... It's the one I can never find, but it's here. It's where it says that if, if your lot was created a certain date and you're going into a more restrictive zone. Interpretation of boundaries.
But does the boundary divide the lot? Or is the boundary on the lot line?
So in this case... The boundary is here. So this is the industrial zone, and this is the residential zone. Here's the lot line, here's the zone line, and here's the proposed building with... So the question is the setback here.
Can I add two comments?
Sure.
The section of the bylaw that talks about the old lots, the old 1986 lots, really doesn't apply here because subsequent to the original Andy Lane building, he then created two lots right on the industrial zone with a little bit behind, in the residential zone, behind the main building. So that, that situation ended the moment he created the two lots. So the lot, when this was purchased, the lot was on the industrial zone. Subsequent to this developer's purchase, he's moved the lot line. But the zoning line remains consistent. It is where it was when, when we created the zone.
If the, if the 50-foot setback for the industrial building can be on the residential zone, in the residential zone?
No, well, the 50-foot setback, I'm not sure I'm reading it that way. So the 50-foot setback is a setback, that's not a use.
Right.
The, 174-5D says, "Where district boundary line divides a lot existing at the time such line is adopted, the regulations relating to the less restricted portion of such lot, which is industrial, may extend not more than 30 feet into the more restricted portion, which is residential." So that's like the industrial use itself, provided that the lot has frontage in the less restricted district, which I think it does here. So the industrial use itself can go 30 feet in. I don't consider a setback to be a use. It's a dimensional requirement, so.
I am.
Let me finish.
Okay.
It, and I don't know what, I'd have to go back to the plan and see if there's an industrial use that goes 30 feet more over that line. A passive use obviously does not.
No.
So I don't really have...
There has been a use historically that extends into the residential zone, which is parking. And this plan does away with that. Indeed, practically, practically, the use has been done away with it because the installed privacy tanks and concrete blocks prevent use of the parking.
Yeah, I mean, I read it that we would have to track some kind of ancillary, at the, at the very least, industrial use, like parking or truck flow or something like that. If there's nothing more than 30 feet into that residential zone, and again, I don't consider a setback to be a use. I consider it to be a requirement of setting back a building.
From the lot line.
Yeah.
To clarify, the area that is extending into the Residential A portion behind the building is the pervious pavers for public safety vehicle to access around the back. But again, that didn't go more than 30 feet. But it is part of the project, but it's not the building. It's an access for public safety.
And it's not more than 30 feet?
I don't believe it, I can't see it on the small.
20.
20 feet, and, right.
I don't, unless I'm missing something, I don't really have much of a quarrel with that particular provision of the bylaw. But I'm not a student of this, again, just kind of, I don't want to offer too much in the way of opinions, just kind of jumping into this late, so.
Let me, I was, I was on the planning board when the zoning was put back in place in the 90s. And this particular provision was put in place to protect a number of lots, particularly on Route 9, where the zoning line was in the middle of the lot. And there were portions in another zone that was all part of that lot. And it came up with Andy Lane in 1986, where, where he was building the building. His setback was proper on his particular building. But he was granted an easement for some of those activities behind the building, for circulation. And I believe he wanted to capture that drainage basin onto his property. But at this end of the property, Lane then did an approval not required and separated the lots. So there was an industrial lot and a residential lot. And if you look at that provision, that's it. The lot now has been separated, so that provision no longer applies. He can't go back to before the zoning because it now has been two lots for the last 40 years. So I, I take the position that, well, in A, you can't cite that parking because the parking was illegally put in, was never part of any site plan. So I wouldn't rest my hand on that parking. But I, the spirit of the zoning and the zoning in places, setbacks behind buildings belonging in the zone they're in. Otherwise, otherwise, we've got industrial buildings right up against the residential zone, in this particular case. And it towers over all the residences. I'd have less concern with this building if it were 50 feet further in and we had a proper zone and we had the proper 20-foot buffer between the industrial and the residential zone, notwithstanding that I'm missing entirely the handicapped access behind that building. We need a paved access way for handicap to exit that building in the rear. Each of those units needs two means of egress. So you're going to have a paved path back there that, again, is in the wrong zone. So that, I just need clarification on that. And I don't think it's been done anywhere else in town.
So there are doors on the south side of the building, correct? The garage bay doors are on the north side.
There isn't door, but how does he get out? He doesn't have a path.
Sorry?
It needs to be paved. You can't wheel a chair across a, I don't know what it's called, that public safety path.
It's for fire truck access.
That's correct.
Right.
But it's not paved access for a handicapped person.
Well, other than the setback question, the building proponents would surface during your building permit application if there were accessibility concerns with that. Yeah.
But normally, those, those issues, loading dock issues, access issues, are all contained within the zone that the building is in. I don't, I'm less concerned that this owner owns that piece of residential land. But those are all industrial activities associated with the building, and they should be in the industrial zone. I just, if I'm wrong, I'll stand corrected. But that's the way I've always looked at it.
So those permeable pavers, the access along the back, are 20 feet within the residential zone, which is allowed in our code, which allows the more permissive use to go 30 feet into the less, less restricted use.
You can go 30 feet into the more restricted.
Yeah, yeah. So I think they're okay there. And then Town Council opined that the setback isn't a use, so that the setback in the residential is fine. Anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you.
There was a lingering question if December 2nd, with the action deadline to December 8th, was sufficient? And depending on if the proponent wants to show progress on the plans at that point, and then if you're still not there, you'd be amenable to an extension again.
Well, we agree to extend it to December 6th, as of today.
Well, yeah, it's December 2nd, yeah, plus four is 6th.
Continue the hearing to December 2nd and?
With action deadline on the 6th, right. But there was a question as to whether it would be more feasible to extend the action, you'd continue to the next hearing, but extend the action deadline again so you wouldn't have to do another form again. It's a, it's a small thing, but it sometimes helps the process. I think that's what was being asked.
We'll do the second for the hearing and the sixth for action for now. Be back in touch.
Okay. That's not my decision to make, but that's what your plan is.
That's our request.
That's, that's what we got, I guess.
Yeah, that's the extension you have in front of us tonight. We emailed it to George earlier in last week.
Charlie? So the motion is to extend the decision deadline on 250 Turnpike Road, major site plan approval, to December 6th. And in the same motion, we'll just extend this public hearing to December 2nd, 2024, 7:00 PM.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Louhan, yes?
Tameri, yes?
Brash, yes.
Happy Thanksgiving. The next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 7 Ashley Road Accessory Apartment. You're going to check out? Thank you, Jay.
Hers was under 900.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you so much.
So the current procedure is to go to the ZBA, which in this whole process with ADUs, it will only come to the planning board now in the future. But our role in that was just, oops.
All right, if we need it, I'll get it. But in the meantime, we can get this done. So I had updated this to proper numbers, but I think it's in the printer.
Okay.
So would you like me to do a quick intro? And then, Mimi, Colleen's just checking. I printed up a draft report that was more cleaned up than the one we had. You hadn't seen it yet, it's what goes to the ZBA as a letter. So Mr. Gowdy is, Ted Gowdy is the builder for the, for the property owner. And the property owner is Mark Boralee's?
Boralee's.
Boralee's, at 7 Ashley Road. And we received an application and filed it with the town clerk and submitted it to the planning board members. Essentially, the, the project is that there, there's an existing single-family house with a two-car garage, and you're going to be adding a third bay. And on top of that third bay will be part of the new accessory apartment. And then you'll also, they'll also be taking a piece of the existing second floor of the house and creating one accessory dwelling unit. And based on the calculations, it's about 19.9, maybe 20% is the ratio of the accessory dwelling unit square footage compared to the total square footage of the existing house and the existing housing. house and the proposed dwelling unit. And you can't be over 25% at this time. So he's at about just under 20% there. There's a large driveway, there's two driveways, right? There's one driveway, yeah, one driveway, I'm sorry. And with the, which can hold three cars, is my understanding. And then there will be three garage bays. So there'll be a total of six spaces available. And I think with a, what did we calculate what was required for parking? It was five spaces? I just have to look at my notes. Yeah, I think it's five based on the parking density in the parking code. So there was sufficient parking. Then there was the question as to whether, there was proper egress, which there is. Mr. Gowdy worked with the building commissioner to make sure that they meet building code for his building permit, and that's what triggered him to have to go to the ZBA. They're also asking the ZBA for a variance because the new garage will be within the side setback. And you're scheduled for that for November 13th.
That's correct.
Right, so the other thing is the septic system. It's an existing four-bedroom house and I didn't get anything about an approved septic system, but you're not changing the number of bedrooms.
We're not changing the number of bedrooms and I've asked the Board of Health to comment on it and they haven't yet, yes.
No, they're probably swamped too. But what the planning board typically does is just note that in the last paragraph of the report that a contingent upon favorable determination from the Board of Health that the existing septic system is adequate for the proposed scenario.
Can I, can I ask for clarification on that? So the house will remain as four bedrooms?
That's correct. So one of the existing bedrooms, we are converting, we are eliminating, and then the accessory dwelling unit will have a bedroom. So it'll remain four bedrooms on the septic system.
Thank you.
Let's see here. So the, just to be clear for the record, that if you take the habitable living area of the existing house and the ADU, it's 5,715 square feet.
Correct.
And then the accessory dwelling unit is proposed to be 1,140 square feet. And when you divide 1,140 by 5,715, it comes to 19.95% of the total habitable floor area of the existing house plus the proposed accessory. So that's within the code. And the off-street parking we just talked about, and you're not proposing to change the look of the single-family house, the new construction blends with the existing house. And there's a photo in your application as well. Did I miss anything? Maybe.
I think you covered it.
Yeah.
There's more detail, but you tell me how much detail you want.
So that's the update.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to add anything else?
Before you, I don't think so.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I can certainly answer them.
Sure.
There's, you know, if you want to read it, there's a memo, you know, by summary to the, to the ZBA is in your packet. Just going to hit all the highlights from a zoning and permitting standpoint. We are asking for both a special permit for the size of the, you know, for the accessory dwelling unit, and then because of the unique shape of the lot, the best spot to put it is on the left, that's almost only spot to put it on the left side of the house, which is in the side yard setback. So we're going to ask for a variance as well.
Okay, thank you. Very, very extensive packet with all the information, I really appreciate that. Mr. Stein?
I have no questions, thank you.
Ms. Houlihan?
Hi, Mr. Gowdy. So I agree, so thank you for the very extensive, it provided very clear reading. I had just two questions. So have your direct neighbors, Lean Kay and Worcester, been contacted about the?
They have been contacted, I know, I leave those communications to my clients and let them contact their butters, I know they've been contacted. I have not heard back regarding the conclusion of those discussions.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question was recognizing that 8.7 foot versus a 10-foot required, I know the zoning board does that, but have you guys thought about an easement into Worcester's property? Or is it, is the variance easier, is that a second step if you get denied in the zoning?
That would be a separate thing.
Okay.
So, you know, the 8.7 is partly driven by the extra egress that we need. And we talked about the ADUs a little bit, that has, the code is actually changing on that a little bit, I don't know if you've probably talked to the building commissioner about that, so we've added that egress there. And I talked with my client, he believes he has the necessary easeness to make sure that he has ingress and egress out of, you know, into the garage or the extra garage that we're adding. Probably one thing that's related to that, if you go into the photos, probably the second photo is, the second and the third photo probably make the most sense. One more photo. You can see the elevation difference between the two properties. And our sits, my client's property is on the right-hand side and it sits kind of up and there's a big bank of trees underneath, and those trees will be, will stay. So from a privacy standpoint, you know, 8.7 seems quite small, but I think from the relative position of the houses, in my humble opinion, there's not going to be any significant impact of what we're trying to do on Mr. Borlees' property with the butter.
So, thank you. Just reviewing it again, extensive, I would support this, I think it's a good thing to do and good thing you're doing it before the ADU takes place.
Hi there, yeah, thank you, I think it was a very nice plan. I have a question about the egress, I guess, or which, which door would the, is the main door to be?
If you can go to sheet DD, DD, sorry. No, go to, go to.
Yes, that's sort of what I was wondering.
DD 3. So if you look at DD 3, you've got the existing two-car garage on the left, and then we're going to add one more car garage on the left. The ADU sits above those three garage bays, basically. The primary ingress and egress will be the rear door on the back left of the house, so there'll be a walkway kind of around the garage to the front driveway. So that's the, I'll call that the front door, even though it's in the back of the house.
Right here.
That one up top there, yes.
Is that, that's an internal stairwell or that's exterior? That's internal?
That stairwell services, if you go to the next page, DD 4.
Just hoping it wasn't like the circular kind, just an emergency or something.
The primary stair is that main stair in the back that comes up and gets you into the unit and comes in through the kitchen. That's the primary stair that services the unit. There's another ingress and egress, which is the door on the right-hand side of the unit that goes into that exit there. So that'll allow you to access the other, the primary dwelling. I guess I'll call it the code clarification, is that that can't serve as a means of egress from a building code standpoint.
Okay.
And so we're going with the building commissioner, we added the spiral stair off the bedroom.
Okay.
As, in essence, emergency egress for the bedroom. And we had it out a few different places, but that was chosen as the best place from an aesthetic standpoint.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So 100% of the living space for this ADU is upstairs then?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I mean, I used to serve on the ZBA and we used to get a lot of garages with bonus rooms that people were trying to, we thought that they might be thinking about ADUs in the future. And it came up quite often whether or not it's a good, good spot to put your elderly parents upstairs.
Right.
And so I think that from what I feel is that, you know, you've got suitable stairs and safety measures to be able, that they can comfortably walk in and out as long as they can walk upstairs.
Yeah, so one of the things you'll notice is the stair is a little wider than a typical stair. So we build the stair four feet wide, and when you do that, then you can, you know, if you get to the point that you do need assistance getting up instead of stairs, then you can put one of those stair elevator seats or whatever by making the stair wider.
Yeah.
So from that standpoint, you could drive in and then use that as a means of getting up and then, so.
Thank you, that's all I have, thank you very much and thanks for the thorough plans.
Ms. Brashaw?
Thank you, again, thank you for the plans, like everybody else said. I think, I think this is really great, I think it fits in very tastefully with the neighborhood, I think it's a great addition, so I look forward to supporting it, thank you.
Thank you, I have no further questions, so do we just want to?
The planning board should vote to recommend a report be provided to the ZBA in support, and you have to decide if you want the contingent upon that, you know, one of the, that it's a septic system that suits.
Yep, so moved with that contingency.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes?
Demiria, yes?
Brashaw, yes?
All right, I'm going to just tweak this letter a little bit tomorrow and send it to the ZBA administrator, Lara. And they'll have it for your hearing on the 13th.
Wonderful, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Do you want to come back for our next ADU discussion?
If I may, I do have one comment. It seems to me that you're trying to accomplish the objective of having, getting a 50% vote versus a 2/3s vote?
Yeah.
And I did wonder if you are reducing what's allowed by the bylaw from a square footage standpoint, if that's not a substantive change and therefore, from a point of order standpoint, if you're not going to be required to do the 2/3s majority?
Well, so by state statute for this new ADU bylaw, if you stick within the parameters of what they put forth, then you only require to, there's certain things that they changed in zoning that only require a majority instead of 2/3s?
That, so from a, like if you put together a bylaw, it sounds like that meets the state statute as a, as a new bylaw, then I could, you know, I don't know the details, but if you're going to go ahead and modify the existing bylaw that reduces what's, what's possible, in other words, that this project would not be possible underneath, what I mean here is the proposed bylaw.
I don't think that's the direction we're going.
And that's not.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're making something by right to adhere to a state-driven initiative. And I understand town council sat here and said, well, maybe we just won't allow it. Personally, and I think that the board will end up allowing provisions to do things with special permit or some other path. The whole point of this is to make, let me get easier.
Right, okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda, 37 Clifford Street scenic tree removal. I see Sam in the, in the attendees, I wonder if Sam wants to come over?
Sam, are you interested in joining us?
He can't speak, hold on.
Well, he would raise his hand, right? Yep, his hand is up.
Okay, now we can talk. Go ahead, Sam.
Happy to talk about this if you would like. Mimi?
Yeah, sure, just give me one second for a little background information and then you get to go. So there was a discussion on this tree that was removed from 37 Clifford, and they had proposed to little non-native, susceptible to disease and pest trees, and they don't live very long. And the select board had voted to require them to pick trees from the street tree guidelines as our policy states. And then there was all kinds of back and forth about this $500 fine in the state statute. And from talking to town council, that's true because we don't, the 500 is in the state statute, we can't fine someone monetarily more. But the replacement is something completely different, so it's not that we can't have replacements that equal more than $500. So then Sam did some additional research into, we have a trespass in mass general laws, trespass of trees. So now, Sam, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. Again, given the limited recourse we have in terms of fining people, apparently, I was looking for other reasons, particularly to get some recourse to the contractor in this case versus the homeowner, as well as the homeowner in terms of replacement piece. And I found chapter 242, section 7, which basically says that if someone cuts down a tree on someone else's property, then that opens the offender up to paying damages and in some cases triple damages, which substantially raises the bar in terms of recourse. And I'd asked town council about this and he got one of his associates to look at it and concluded that it actually works for municipalities as well as for private entities, which is where it's been mostly applied historically. And so that opens another path potentially. And I've not actually proposed this yet to the select board, but where I'm headed is to propose that we explore trying to get recourse from the contractor in this case through the damages route. And so I hope to have that on the agenda for our next select board meeting and I guess stay tuned, I think that's to me a more appropriate recourse here for this particular tree, frankly, and I hope we can get some relief that way as well.
Thank you, Sam. I'm in agreement with this route.
Thanks, Sam.
We're going to call this the Houlihan tree, actually. And this will become the Houlihan recourse method.
Anyone have any other comment on that?
Well, it's a good segue into the next bit because as I'll mention when I get to the scenic road thing, I would propose that we think seriously about how do we, how are we able to beef up our, you know, replacement trees? Because I found that in particular pretty offending, I guess, you know, it was a 40-something inch tree. Many towns have bylaws, scenic road bylaws, and they're able to, in the rules and regs, put in their fee schedule, their replacement schedule, and it's inch per inch and they put a dollar amount on it. Thank you, Sam, for doing all that work, it's very creative and I think that the, you know, the tree companies that are chopping down these trees, when they come into town, they really need to know what, what rules are we playing by? And they, they have a, you know, they have to have an ownership in this too, so I actually really appreciate that, that's very clever.
Yeah, it's state law, so it's not like, some towns are more strict, but it is state law, so anyone that operates in the state should have a knowledge of that.
Yeah, totally agree.
Thank you, Sam.
Can I just add also, Sam, thank you very much for that, I think, I really appreciate your digging into this and I think it gives us another avenue to pursue as more of these larger trees seem to be coming down, so I appreciate the initiative, thank you.
Unfortunately, I'm familiar with this statute, but from New Hampshire, it's a very similar statute which I had to utilize.
Mimi?
Yes.
I'd add one other comment, this particular contractor on their website has a paragraph about the company that says, "We believe it's extremely important to understand local laws and regulations and get all the necessary permits before we cut anything down." So very interesting juxtaposition there.
They have a misleading website? Come on.
I'm sure they believed it, but the man on the street there with his chainsaw apparently didn't read that. I'm sure they believed it, but the man on the street there with his chainsaw apparently didn't read that part of it, I guess. I don't know. So we'll see.
Nor did he choose to listen to the Houlihan principle.
What, so one other thing on this. Do you, Sam, know if the police department has been cued into this? Like if they are called out to do a detail to remove a tree, they should check with Chris?
I don't know that. Actually, in this particular case, there was a detail there.
Yeah.
That day. And again, it seems to me that there needs to be better communication there. That's something we can follow up on.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, scenic road tree and stone wall bylaw and regulations, an introduction.
Yes, so that's a great segue. Okay, so I just, to jump in, I just said, you know, we've been looking at, at some of these issues that linger for a long time. This one in particular, like tree gets taken down, what happens, who's responsible, what's the fee, who's gonna write the letter, what about the follow-up, all that kind of thing. I've been putting together, so last, let's start last year in July, I came with a proposal for a scenic road policy. And the feedback I got at the time was that we really need something that's like kind of more educational, educate the town. I worked, had been working on something for the last year, actually. And what I came up with is a proposal for a scenic road bylaw. And why a bylaw is really for this very reason. It sort of sets forth what's under the scenic, the planning board's jurisdiction. But also, it's sort of like rules of engagement also describes who, who decides, who, you know, who does what, and has some enforcement to it. So I'll tell you, I have not read this tree policy in this, so this is not a workaround around our tree policy at all. It's really something completely separate. What I've done is I've researched on, you know, as many towns as I could find, through as many searches as I could do on scenic roads. And I found that a lot of towns that don't have tree bylaws or even a tree policy or tree ordinance, they do have something for scenic roads. So it's just scenic roads protections. And it's, it's really, it has very little overlap with any potential, you know, tree bylaw that a town might have or tree policy. The main emphasis of it, of course, is, you know, protection and maintenance of our stone walls and our trees. And, you know, they're more or less cookie cutter. They contain pretty much the same components. Some towns actually list their, their scenic roads in their bylaw, but others, they have a companion document. So what I've given you in the, in the box today for future, if we decide to move forward, is what I think are more like rules and regulations. But in fact, Tim Lit and I actually were working on this last year, so kudos to Tim. He really, you know, started the first drafts, and I kind of took it the next step. And what I've done is like little by little, as we've gone through these different tree hearings and these different things have happened, I've started to put some of the details into the, what I'll call the tree manual or rules and regulations. And hopefully, you know, it sets kind of a, a marker in the sand of how the planning board feels about protecting our scenic roads. So as I said, it's not meant to go around any other policy that's in place. I think it's complimentary, but it also kind of clarifies some things that have come up as these little wrinkles. One of them is, you know, what do we do when a large tree is taken down? And I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, the 37 Clifford tree, in some towns, you know, they, they're charging like 83 or something dollars an inch. Over 24 inches, it's double. I mean, that could be a $5,000 tree. So that's why I'm a little offended at the two twigs that were offered. But, so we should be serious about that. And, you know, hopefully, with more awareness and some enforcement, this is a deterrent. This is the best deterrent, and we don't really have very many big trees. I did look up on oaks. It depends what kind of oak tree that was, but that could have been a 200-year oak. It's definitely over 100. And depending on what kind, it could be over 200. So, so I came up with the shortest bylaw I could, honestly. Very kind of, very simple with the basic components to it. I don't know if you want to put up the slides, but the slides are in the packet. But I just really wanted to talk to the board about, you know, I think it's time to take it to the next level. The tree policy is very good. Obviously, we're still working out things. I wanted to just note that since I've been on the board, there's been three DPW chiefs in three years. And each one of them interpreted, I would say, slightly differently our tree policy. And, you know, one extreme being Karen Galligan, and now our current DPW chief. And if you have a bylaw and you have a handbook, I don't, I think that there's rules of engagement. Those things don't change. This is how we do business. And, you know, whatever the determination is of how we do business, it, at least, I think it has to be written down so that our, our residents know, our utility companies that come into town know what to expect, our tree cutters who come into town know what to expect. And so that was kind of the thinking behind it. So I'm looking for, you know, your thoughts, not on the policy or the bylaw itself tonight, but just whether or not it's something that you think that we could, you know, want to work on in the future.
Mr. Stein.
Deb, I mean, thanks for doing this work. It's, it's something that I certainly, you know, in principle, support. I guess my question is, we approached town meeting with a similar initiative to, what was it, two years ago? It was very thoroughly discussed on town meeting floor. It really seemed evident to me that the town, at the moment, does not want more code or more restriction. And I think that initiative, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that that was just actually taking state law and putting it into our code, in effect. Do you want to comment on that, since you were the one that...
Pretty, yeah.
Okay, I'm conflating things. Yeah.
Yeah, pretty close, pretty close. That's what it was.
So...
Yeah, I mean...
Can we just talk about that for a second, though, because I, I feel like that, I'm, I'm sure I'm confused, but...
You are not.
But that discussion is coming to mind as I review this. And I would hate for us to be wasting the board's and the department's resources and time on yet another attempt to, you know, make additional code changes that are not going to be well-received at town meeting, despite our best intentions.
Well, it was a tie.
It was a tie?
It was a tie.
Okay.
So it failed.
But is, how, how is this gonna be different, I guess is the question, in your opinion?
I don't know. I haven't had a chance to really read it thoroughly through. But I don't have the regional public safety building on the same warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, so I...
Interesting point.
I think it was a tough crowd.
It was a tough crowd, but...
That felt, felt that they were being pushed around for, in very, very many instances, which got taken out on trees.
We already have a tree policy in place, that we're having these joint meetings with select board on a semi-regular basis. It seems like there's much better enforcement now than there was before.
So this tree came down a year ago.
Okay.
So, so we do have a policy. It, I don't think it's being followed, as is evident by the fact that two non-native susceptible-to-pest-and-disease-and-only-live-for-10-year trees were proposed that aren't in the street tree guidelines, and that's one of the things, that trees must be from the street tree guidelines.
So, okay, I guess I'm lost. Maybe we should just go down the line because I'm not, I'm not understanding what this is gonna do that's gonna save that tree that you, that you just referenced, I guess.
Well, so this would only apply to scenic roads, and this would be in parallel to the, the policy. So we, the, the planning board would have, along with the tree warden, would have some enforcement also. And there would be enforcement under 87 in the, in the tree policy.
So it's two different things?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I'm just ambivalent based on my, my read of town meeting the last two, three years. I don't see it right now, personally, but I'm wording upward.
Ms. Houlihan.
Thank you. Deb, really thank you for, one, recognizing that there's a problem and a challenge in being the solution-oriented individual to kind of lead the effort to, to research and review it. I saw this on the agenda, and I was looking for this on Sun, Saturday, when I had some time, and I didn't see it yet. So I see it now. I read it through quickly. So the one thing that I can say about this, at least as it's proposed without a fine-tooth comb, is that I think that the, the, we have a, like, I don't know, 70 streets that are on our scenic road streets, and people who live on scenic roads don't understand the implication of a scenic road. I think this chapter of the bylaw, if it were to be adopted, helps define what a scenic road is, helps define kind of what the requirements are when you live on a scenic road, specific to stone walls and trees. And it provides some clarity, and I think that's what's missing, to be very honest. I mean, I live on a scenic road. I will, I'm on planning board. I still don't know if I have a, since my stone wall is dilapidated and I want to repair it, do I have to come for a meeting to get it repaired? And I know I do, but like, you know, it just would make sense. I could go out there and repair it. Well, I can't. But I think if those people who live on streets have an education, have a place to look, and we really take this on as an effort, I mean, sort of like what we did with MBTA, where we put postcards out, and we just say, hey, you guys all live on a scenic road. This is what's happening at town meeting. We're gonna have some public hearings about this bylaw. Learn about what you, road you live on. Learn about what the implications are. Learn about the mass state law obligating you. I think it's a, it's just an excellent idea. I can't comment on whether the, the people at town floor would approve it or not, but I do think it's, it's kind of part of our obligation as planning board, is to educate our, our community and to build awareness and to make sure that we're doing the right thing to preserve what Southborough is all about. So that's kind of how I see it, and I just really commend you for taking the steps. I think it's, it's crystal clear, and I think there's opportunities for all of us to read it and, and then come back when we have a little bit more deeper understanding of what you've pulled together. But thank you.
So actually, before, so are you thinking for, like, along the same timeframe as the ADU? Like, start the public hearings in January in preparation for April?
Well, I'm not thinking anything. I mean, I've been working on it a long time, so if that's not the right one, then, you know, the future. I think that the, kind of the handbook that I put together, starting with Tim Lit, is kind of almost, you know, our stamp in, you know, what we believe. I was wondering whether we could, you know, if the, if the board wanted, whether that's something that we could start using. I mean, obviously, the enforcement, I don't believe we're able to do. But, you know, that would, you know, sort, get some more outreach to people to help them go online and say, what do I do about my scenic road? Oh, here's a guideline, or here's a, here's a manual. But I don't have that sense of urgency because I do think that the process is working, right? So if it's annual town meeting, then that's, that would be great. We now have ADUs. That might be a tough one, so maybe it's not the right meeting. Maybe it's the next meeting. So either is fine.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to like, kind of figure it out as to whether or not...
Right.
In the context of ADUs, and let's see what else is on the warrant.
Yeah.
But I'm not entirely opposed to it.
No, that's fair. And actually, just to let you know, I've been keeping like track of the comments and stuff that people have made to me. And I have three pages of just various, all-over-the-place things, even to, you know, Deb, drive to these other towns and look how the trees are trimmed. I've got a chunk taken out of my tree, and it looks ridiculous. People that are almost crying. A couple select board meetings ago, there was a woman here, I now know who she is, but with her grandson, and she was here for the Parkerville hearings for National Grid, because the postings were on the tree. And she wasn't told that there was no tree hearing. So she came, and I told her that it was gonna be postponed. So, I mean, there's, there's just, of course, there's things that we can do better, but I think that more people are becoming aware of scenic roads, especially folks that saw, you know, 30, 40, 50 postings on their trees. That's another great example. You know, I did some research on National Grid because of that whole thing to find out, why are there so many trees? And they had told us it was because of outages. I looked at the outages. It's not there. So that's, I mean, we have a relationship with National Grid, but they were kind of using this definition of hazard tree. And we know what the definition of hazard tree is, right? And so we just, I think that we've, I feel like we're kind of in a spot where we now, as a board, know what it is that we, where our authority lies over scenic roads. And I think it's just, you know, for me, it's just time to, to let the public know that, yeah, we're gonna start protecting these trees. And looking at other towns, you remember where we were a couple years ago with no, you know, our trees were being topped? You know, and we were thinking, wow, Southborough seems to be the only town that has these crazy-looking trees. They just chop off the tops. To find out that there's other things that, you know, pruning methods that kill trees, like lopping or something like this with these big branches, we just can't let these, these things happen. So whichever the board decides, you know, I'm sure we can make progress to move forward, but my idea was for the enforcement part of it and the clarity on what our role is on the scenic roads. I think that we would have to have a bylaw.
Ms. Brashio.
Thank you. Thank you, Deb, for all the work that you did on this. I think we need to do something. I think, I think education, for now, is the key. I worry about trying to put us on a time schedule for annual town meeting. There is so much going on in the new year with the schools, and I just, with the ADU, and I just worry that people are gonna become frustrated with sitting at town meeting for a long time, and they're gonna go, it's just trees. And that's kind of what happened the last time. I think some people were just like done with having conversations, and they wanted town meeting to be over. So, I mean, I think if we take this time now, I, I agree with you. You've set the groundwork for education, and we find a way to do that over the course of the next year, or even maybe into, if there's a fall town meeting. You know, to, to find a way. I think better educating people will serve town meeting much better, instead of us trying to explain and people saying, well, it's just a tree, and, you know. So again, hopefully, if we educate, we'll get those people to come to town meeting that will understand and understand the importance, as you have so succinctly said tonight, of these trees and what's happening to these trees. So I'm, I'm supportive of what you're trying to do. I just am not supportive on a, on a tight timeframe to do it. That's all. But thank you. I, I'm amazed. I just glanced it over quickly. I look forward to, you know, delving into it more as well. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, if you're looking for pictures of trees in Southborough, the very best place to go is Zillow. Because homes that are listed that have beautiful public shade trees and stone walls, they're right there in the listing. So it is part of the value of our properties. And, but also, if you think about why people move to town, it's for the schools, it's for the open space, and it's for the stone walls and our public shade trees. And the, really, Zillow could be our branding because there's beautiful pictures on there.
Thank you, Debbie, for all the work on this. And I agree. I think it's more of a long-range project and start with the outreach and education. But we don't need to do hearings for it. It's not a zoning bylaw. So it's not a zoning. It's a general bylaw. So we don't have to do hearings.
Mimi, have you ever considered starting a newsletter from the planning board over some of these?
I have not.
Well, um, yeah, I'll volunteer.
Who's volunteering?
You know, but a quarterly, you know, quarterly thing where maybe everybody pitches in with a little issue or whatever. And we send it out to the whole town resident and find out what happens with it. And that's a good way to get word out without there any stress to it. Just here it is.
Melissa Danza, the conservation, every once in a while, she'll send out an educational alert.
Yeah, something like that. You can come up with a.
Well, in the, in the select board has a newsletter too.
Oh, well, there you go.
And I've actually heard people talk about being out and about and heard people talk about the select boards, Mr. Purple's newsletter.
Yeah, not that one.
So I think it's, it's a great, I think it's actually a great, great idea, Kelly. I do.
It's short enough that it's a quick read. And so you go to it because you know it's like a two-minute.
Yeah, and you can do, you know, say in the spring, know your scenic roads and trees and have a little say-so about it. Yeah, you know?
I moved to volunteer, Kelly. Do the newsletter.
Until after ADUs.
Yeah, after ADUs.
After ADUs.
I don't think ADUs.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Any comment on scenic roads?
I think it's fabulous because you do have to look at it as the cumulative effect town-wide. And, you know, it's an asset that should be protected. So I look forward to seeing what you put together, Debbie. Leah Emerson, Southborough EDC Coordinator.
Full-time in January. And another thing, Kelly, you can put into the newsletter as we come into the spring is ADUs. I'm thinking of all these great things now. You know, zoning, any of the zoning changes we're talking about as well. It, there you go. Scenic roads, like you said. Yeah, I think, I think that's great.
All set on this one? Do you have any comment on scenic roads, Sam?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, proposed zoning amendments.
So the, the big one we already talked about, which is ADUs. It was nice for town council to volunteer to take that over. And the other things, so we had, we met today, Karina, myself, building commissioner, Leah, Al Hamilton and Marguerite. Yeah. So parking is a, a big thing to the building commissioner. So he is going to submit in addition to our parking session for shared parking. So that will be coming soon. And the other things are little cleanup things like the, expand the uses in the industrial park. And I would like, I don't know if this board ever agreed to it, but I would like to have special, us, the planning board be special permit granting authority for any use that requires site plan review. So it's a one-stop instead of the two. Okay. So that, I have a list of all the sections in the code that that would apply to. So I'll get that together and send that out. I think that's all I have on that one.
Yeah, and were those goals for eighteen, annual town meeting twenty twenty-five?
I think definitely the parking was.
The two, the ADU and the parking, because they were gonna do two.
Yeah, if we can get the other little cleanie-up-y things too, but.
Expanding the other.
Let's just, we'll concentrate on those two things for now.
And then supplement, yeah.
Um, Mimi, I also started just pulling other towns from their either e-code or their other systems to be able to see what they list. And so I've created that. I was gonna, and it actually, Alan Beliniak gave the idea of ChatGPT. And so I did ask ChatGPT and a couple of, of those AI, they don't have access to things like e-code. So they can't go in and, and like do searches. So you have to go in, do the search, pull it out, feed it. And then it will create like a massive table. So that's kind of what I, like, he gave me that idea. So I started doing that on Saturday. So I started pulling a couple of towns that are similarly sized to Southborough, just to understand what they do and all in their zoning. And then also thinking about towns that are on the Route Nine and see how they're doing. Because we probably won't do Framingham, but just to see what they do so there's comparison. So I hope to have something by the next meeting that you can at least, you know, use in your meetings to think about how we would refine language.
Yeah. Do they have dwellings for a night watchman?
I mean, ours are so antiquated, yeah.
So we, so the most, we did update them with the ZAC, but that was, you know, twenty twelve. So that was a while ago too. Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, I'm sorry, Leah Emerson, Southborough EDC Coordinator. My question is, if you're able to get in some of those short-term asks, like in the industrial park zoning districts for some.
Expanded uses.
Expanded uses, exactly. That would be subject to a public hearing process. And did we determine from that meeting when we talked about that Karina, working backward, what that timeline might look like before town meeting?
Yeah.
We're gonna work on it.
Would it, would it have to track with the ADU public hearing process?
It's the same as with the ADU. It's on the same track.
Okay. And of course, that would also apply to the parking that Chris Lund is proposing.
January sixth would be the target date for the public hearings for zoning amendments.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on that?
There is one, one more thing. I did watch a previous meeting, a planning board meeting. And I did want to clarify, I think Jesse, you had the comment, as to whether or not what Andrew Dennington is proposing as far as pursuing a one-stop grant for this next cycle, if that's linked to what I came to you all back in December about. And it is linked because it's really all in service of master plan goals under section three point oh. At least that falls to the EDC under our section of the master plan. And so it's really kind of all in service of those goals and trying to kind of move things in that direction. We understand that you have a ton on your plate. All of this is very slow-moving and it's incremental. But really, I, I think it's great that we have short-term goals that you can maybe get on to the next couple of town meetings. But we still need to keep our eye on more of a overarching corridor study with zoning update recommendations. So it's sort of like short, midterm and longer-term changes that, that would be recommended for zoning updates. So.
Yeah, I think that the disconnect in my mind has always been what specifically needs to happen. And zoning changes, as we've learned, learned nothing else, they have to be extremely precise and explainable and justifiable.
Absolutely. You gotta get it through town meeting. And it's, it's, it's a very difficult lift.
But it's doable.
Sure.
If we have the, the clarity and the direction and we can say, okay, this change would have made a difference in the case of, you know, let's say a, a big tenant was interested and didn't occupy a commercial space because of a, a specific issue.
Right.
I mean, I'm just not aware of it. That's the, that's really what I'm trying to convey.
Yeah, it obviously, I mean, it does happen. Whether or not we're always aware of why people leave town, that's kind of a hard thing to track or gauge. We don't necessarily have the outreach mechanism to be able to follow up when those things occur. And it's always evolving and changing. But, you know, I think there's a lot of towns where their zoning bylaws are so outdated that they do not align with their master or comprehensive plan. So it's not a unique issue. But if we can look at making zoning updates that are going to help us get to where we want to go with the master plan goals, that's, I think, really what we're advocating for. So, thanks.
Leah, can I ask?
We add a diversity of housing with MBTA.
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations again on that. And the ADU, I think, is another step in the right direction. So.
Can I ask you one question? Is EDC talking about, I mean, you've talked about like mixed-use development along Route Nine and, and various different initiatives that you guys are, are thinking about. I'm really concerned about noise. As you might know, anybody who tunes in, I'm, that's kind of been my angle. And I was kind of surprised when I've talked to people that don't live anywhere near me along Route Nine, like way down, it's sort of on the other side of town. And, you know, Route Nine is getting louder. You know, there's like racing at night and trucks doing with their Jake brakes. And it's, it's like out of control right now. And I just don't know how I could see people living right on Route Nine with it being a, basically a state highway.
Well, I mean, we, we have the fortyBs.
Yeah.
Coming down the Pike. And, you know, there are many towns, Westborough being one of them, as well as Framingham, where they have housing right up either along the rail corridor or along Route Nine. I do think that a corridor study would have to take that into consideration because it's a MassDOT state route.
Yeah.
You would have to probably factor that in and, and have some contacts within MassDOT on how you would be able to do, introduce traffic calming measures or other kinds of mitigation when you're talking about tucking in mixed-use, if it has a residential component along certain stretches of Route Nine. I don't think that housing all along Route Nine is necessarily appropriate. And I think that you'll have to study it and it'll have to be fairly selective as how, as to how you go about that. The mix of uses, whether or not they're complementary. And so that's a discussion for another time, but I do think that you have to be thoughtful about it. And it is something that I think a corridor study could, could help address.
Thanks.
Thank you. Move on.
Next item on the agenda, discussion item, on-call consultant recommendation to town administrator select board. Do you want to bring us up to date, Karina?
So we had a group, Mimi, me and Melissa Danza, Bill Kondiff and Melanie Atsuka representing town administrators presence to interview three firms, which we did about two weeks ago. And we've kind of shortlisted down to two of the firms for first and second choice. And there was a general consensus, it was a majority for one of the firms, but there was then the question, ask Melissa to check some references. And those proposals were in the Dropbox.
They're in their packet too.
Oh, you put propose, the proposals in the packets? We didn't have any. You mean the consultant ones?
Well, they let everything from the Dropbox printed for them to look at.
Oh, okay.
To make notes on.
Um, I don't think you put the proposals in here. They're really big. They're the consultant proposals. Anyway.
No, you know what? I do have them. I started, I was like, this is too big to print. Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's all right. Mimi has them because she's on the selection committee. And I have them too. So I don't know if it's appropriate to name names at this point. If anyone's interested in the public, they can reach out to me at the planning or calling and we can talk to them that way. But you think it is?
Well, because we need to make a recommendation to the town administrator.
True. That's true. Okay. I just wanted to tread carefully in case that's not appropriate. So there were three firms. There was Howard Stein Hudson. That's a firm that's currently reviewing one of the fortyB projects. Two fifty turn Pike. Then there is Haley Ward out of Auburn. And then Niche Engineering out of Boston. And all three gave presentations. And there was some clear differences. So Niche Engineering gave a very, were fully prepared presentation, PowerPoint, answered the questions. Part of the ask for the interview was, we provided them with a, a plan that was somewhat redacted that had been withdrawn in the past and to come up with some quick notes on what they felt about this plan. So the niche firm was very comprehensive and organized and brought up details from an engineering perspective that were very important that we might not see every day. That firm, actually, there were, there's five of us. Three of the selection committee right away selected Niche. I was on the fence only because I wanted to read the proposals a little bit more. And Bill said he was good with either one of the firms, but did like Niche and Haley Ward. You know, were, were one of the top two. So Haley Ward is a smaller, is a smaller office, but taken over by a larger company. They also provided relatively decent responses to the, the mock plan we gave them. A little bit more on the fly. And they brought their wetland scientists, who they work with typically, who's pretty renowned and quite well-versed. And then Howard Stein Hudson came in with the person who would be the project manager and then a traffic engineer. And they were good, but they were a little bit more off the cuff. Not as organized, but depending on, you know, the type of approach you want and the specificity of the review, it made a difference. So after the references came in, I believe that I came, I, I, I felt extremely, I leaned heavily towards Judith Niche, the niche engineering. And then Haley Ward is second.
So they, so Niche, although their main office is in Boston, there's another close, where are they? Auburn or?
Uh, not Auburn. They're in.
Which is where the, we, the person who would, we would be dealing with is out of.
Oh, Upton.
Upton.
So he lives in Upton, but that's not where their office is.
No, but he, but he's not in Boston.
He's not in Boston. Right. Just quickly tell you because I know it's getting late.
So I'm looking in the Dropbox. I don't see anything in the packets about fees. Maybe I'm missing it. Which one? Number eight?
The proposals were a little bit, um, very.
So, so that came up, the fees in their proposal.
Okay.
Niche was more, more expensive than the other two.
Okay.
But, but Melissa said when they went out to, when they were in search of peer review for the fortyB at two fifty, that Haley Ward, which was less than anybody else, came in ten thousand dollars above all the other ones for that particular project. So I don't know how.
Well, I know in doing that work in my past, that it depends on your in-house comfort level with a project and your schedule. If you're extremely busy, you might price something higher at that time because you can, because you don't need the work. Or you need to call in other expertise or you can, you know, if something's your everyday thing, you can do it much faster.
So how is Niche relative to Fussin' O'Neill in terms of these billing numbers?
Um, I didn't look at that. I don't think any of us looked at that in general. We were looking. We were looking at quality, quality of potential reviews. So we also asked the consultants to provide a sample review letter. And Niche and Haley Ward both provided letters that showed, referenced the code number and explained that, what was missing. And that was, that was good. You know, it was what we're used to, it was the way you can be clear with the applicants as well as to what is, but the standard is what Fussin' O'Neill has been doing in the past. You make your comments, there's responses, and they track them in that letter until the end. And stuff that's addressed falls off the list until everything's addressed.
And Karina had asked, so Fussin' O'Neill, they have kind of a menu, so we, so when a proponent comes in with an application, they can kind of pay for the peer review upfront? And so it's like site plan review is this much? And so both Niche and Haley Ward said they'd be willing to do that same type of thing so we could, you know, get moving right away. Yes?
So I did read both of them. I would actually, just even in the proposal, I thought Niche just did a more thorough job in their proposal. The one thing that I would ask if you guys got in your conversations with them is, you know, sometimes we do hear the delay or it takes a long time, like what the kind of the timelines are, are there guarantees to timelines? Are they willing to come to meetings? Like, did you get any of that feedback during those interviews?
Yeah, definitely willing to come to meetings, all were about two to three weeks, I think.
Yeah, it's very typical times.
The standard.
Two weeks is very aggressive, I think, to turn something around. Because A, they have to price it. We do start with a menu, but each project has an individual little scope that they provide. So they need time to look at the plan and provide that scope, that estimated fee. So that takes a little time.
Yeah, so what they were saying, like bigger projects, more towards three or like the first review and then the follow-ups would, you know, be quicker.
And we were adamant about asking about landscaping, attention to those details, lighting, and the people they'd be using for that. So I just wanted to look at that. I don't want to say too much about the billing rates.
Yeah, I think I'm in support of what you guys would do. I think you understand what we have come to rely on as a planning board and expect. And so I have full confidence that your recommendation would be what I would recommend.
Okay, I do want to point out that the billing rates were relatively similar. There's probably within $20, $30 an hour, but up and down slightly depending on the position. So somewhere-
The other thing I thought was interesting, one of the the references that came back from Carlisle, they said that they used two firms. I was wondering if we should use two. Yeah.
That's a good question. I have no idea why we historically use just one firm, nope.
We talked about this in the selection committee. I just can't remember.
Well, it's certainly, it's certainly easier to keep things straight when you have a lot of projects in the pipeline. Obviously, having one vendor, one partner is going to make it much easier to track.
Yeah, it was something, I'll talk to Bill. They provide services for CBA, conservation, and planning. Whereas previously, Fussin' O'Neill was also going to, could do services for the DPW when they needed it. We've kind of fine-tuned it for the permitting process and follow-up inspections and ASBILs and certificates of compliance for notice of intents, things like that. But that doesn't preclude them from being hired for other services.
And they're very willing to come to meetings and discuss that, which is much easier for them because Fussin' O'Neill's in Springfield, so. Yeah, I, so I, I thought both Haley Ward and Niche were good. Just, Niche was just a little better, very, very professional. Came in with the PowerPoint, they really honed in on the plans. Haley Ward was a little more relaxed, I guess.
Yeah, the office of Haley Ward, the local one here, was Whitman and Bingham. And they were bought out by Haley Ward. So that's why there was not a lot of, you know, local information on them.
Oh, so that's why people didn't know who they were because they were someone else before?
Whitman and Bingham, and I've worked with them and they're wonderful.
Oh, interesting. Haley Ward is the peer reviewer for Douglas, which is where Bill Kondiff came from. So he was like given as one of the references. I'm like, hmm. So he really likes them.
Maybe the recommendation we make, might make, is to consider working, you know, getting both under contract. I'd be in support of that.
Yeah, there was just, I wish I just, maybe I took a note on that. It was just something related to that as we asked that question. Just take a quick peek here.
Right, and I guess that comes down to like capacity and bandwidth, right? Like I run a consulting company and there's points where we can't take on work. So it's not a bad idea to have something or even like pre-contracted, like major site plan that requires, you know, a lid or something else would go here and the other one would go there. Like, I think it's worth the thought process. Excellent suggestion, Mr. Stein.
Yeah. Yep, and we had discussed that early on. That's why I think, I wish I could just remember this one thing. But probably what we don't want to have is if someone doesn't like this one, then you have to go get the other one. It would be, you know, a standard protocol so that we're not, you know, appearing like we're pushing one to one because we, you know, I mean, you want it to be very like unaffected. It has to be just neutral, you know. I don't know how to explain it properly, but you want to, you want to just keep it even for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, they both would be contracted with the town. And depending on maybe who could do the job first, you know, that's an internal thing. Yeah, the tenants don't really need to know about that because they're both contracted with us.
Well, they do because they supply the retainer. But the thing is, what I can do is send an email to the working group tomorrow and ask, you know, these are the two firms that we're leaning towards because I think that was a general consensus. Were there any objections to taking on two firms? And then we'll vet that out again. And then we can, if the board is fine with either one of these selections, then that can be recommended.
Well, and we're not, we're not meeting until December.
No, we have to-
So I don't, I think that we need to take action on this tonight.
Okay.
So I think-
You have a first choice and a second choice and then a both choice.
So it seems like the consensus, maybe we don't even need to vote. I mean, the consensus seems to be that we're in support of your findings and the fact that Niche would be sort of Plan A unless there's no objection by the working group to contracting with both firms. It seems like that's the, you know-
Yeah, that's a great idea.
That's the prevailing sort of feeling here.
That really clarifies it to me, yeah.
But if for some reason your working group comes to the conclusion that really it just has to be funneled into one firm-
Then A would be planning-
Then it would have to be Niche.
I don't think anybody's going to want it.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I second that recommendation that Jesse just verbalized.
Is this a vote or just a consensus?
I was thinking of that, this is a consensus situation personally.
Okay. You're the OG, so.
Lisa, what do you think? Everybody good?
All right, good.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, 352 Turnpike Road, proposed 40B. I don't think, is there anything on that?
I put a letter into the, we sent, the planning board, we provided a comment letter to Mass Housing regarding the comments on the application that Ferris Development provided to Mass Housing. So Ferris applied to Mass Housing for 352 Turnpike. And then Mass Housing said, send us your comments on this after we had a site visit. And we crafted a letter and that letter was submitted on October 23rd. And there were some standard comments based on the other projects and then some specifically for 352. One of which was like proximity to property line, that was kind of unique, it was pretty close. Buffers, some of the standard ones with the building height. They were proposing a, part of a separate project tied to this would be a small restaurant. I think it was like 6,000 square foot footprint, something retailer, restaurant, but that would be its own site plan. But that was mentioned at the site law. So that letter was submitted. And as soon as we hear anything back or if there's an application submitted, then I'll update you. Lara does a good job, she sends out those alerts, too.
Yeah.
That was a long answer.
Anything on that? No? Next item on the agenda, 120 Turnpike Road, 40B. So I was at the last hearing on that and it started that the proponents did not want to extend it, they wanted it to close on that night. And there was some discussion on the board to do that, even though they don't have final plans or there were many questions still in the air. They didn't, so it was continued to 11:13, but it appears it's closing on that date. And we've brought up, so Town Council pushed them to come back with an actual subdivision plan that shows all the lots. Because it doesn't, and I can't imagine how you can approve a subdivision without definitive lots in that subdivision. So hopefully that will come forth. I brought up the fact that that 6.2 acres in its current state does not meet the condition from our site plan. It's got drainage swales through it and it's denuded in parts to put in those drainage swales. And I brought that up a couple of times. And Conservation Commission brought it up because it's, our condition says that it will go to the care and control of the Conservation Commission and they don't want to take care of someone else's drainage swales. So I don't, to me, if that, if that's the way it goes forward, I think it requires a modification of the site plan for that condition because it doesn't meet that condition. But I don't, I don't know if they, it's unclear whether they're paying attention to any of the input from planning or conservation. Yes, ma'am?
So a couple of things. One, I was shocked today at the amount of information that was uploaded to the ZBA website. And I'll just leave it at that, I won't say a whole lot more than that. I couldn't even start to delve through it. I mean, it was, there was just so much new information. So a couple process question, I guess. So if ZBA, again, according to my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, ZBA makes a decision, then it has to come back to Planning Board for site plan modification. Now, what happens if we say it doesn't meet the requirements of the prior site plan with the 6.2 acres of open space, which it's now not? So are we in a conundrum here? I mean, if we say no, what happens? What happens to the 40B? And again, I'm a new member, I'm just, I'm trying to piece the process together in my head. And I'm at a point of, if it doesn't meet the requirements, then- it, yeah, if we deny our part, what happens to the ZBA part? I mean-
So the 6.2 will be on a separate lot by that time. So when they come back from site, for site plan modification, it's only going to include the lot with those two buildings on it.
But again, there was 6.2 acres in the decision. So if the 6.2 acres doesn't, I'm confused, Mimi. Maybe I'll just talk to Karina, are you offline? I don't understand if it's, if it's in the site plan and without us modifying it to take that out.
Well-
I just don't understand the process.
And I, it's my understanding of this. So the 6.2 acres conveyance was a condition of the site plan for the proposed parking garage and the courtyard improvements, that was one project. So that decision still held because they exercised that permit by starting the work. So they're required to convey the six acres. All right? So that, if they convey the six acres, it satisfies that condition. But when the six acres is removed from the property and they're using the driveway now for access, that has to come back to site plan. And also, the 40B building is on, in the parking area now, impacting the parking. So they went to the ZBA and asked for a variance for reduction in parking for 118, 120, the remaining site, because they knew they had the 40B building on there. So now they have a permit for that reduced parking criteria, you know? And if they come back, when they come back for modification, the planning board views the site now as 118, 120, with the driveway being used traffic impact-wise for the 40B and the reduced parking. So it's basically, I know it says it's a modification, but it's a decision that has to be made. So the code that has, they have to meet certain codes. So I would guess they would be asking for waivers for some of these things that, you know, allowed waivers that fall under site plan, that Planning Board can waive. I don't know if that clarifies it any, but-
So, so wait a second. So, sorry, if I may, Lisa. Excuse me. It's such a long day.
Yeah.
So, right now, the permitting authority is the zoning board of appeals. Okay? It is at their discretion whether or not to remand this back to the Planning Board at this point.
Remand the- The modification?
Correct.
No, the modification, Town Council, I think, has said from day one that they always have to come back after everything's through with the ZBA, who has jurisdiction over the subdivision. See, they're not going to A&R the lot off.
So this is where it gets, to me, very murky with 40Bs. Because, just because Town Council opined, doesn't mean the ZBA is beholden. So the ZBA can grant this permit and it's done.
I've never seen-
Well, for the 40B.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so-
So then they're left with this, the 118, 120 that has half of it cleaved off, so it's no longer complies with the site plan.
Lisa brings up like a really important point here, which is, we, at some point, there is no oversight by this board. It's gone. If, once, once the ZBA approves it. And I'm not, I guess I'm, I would love to understand how this is going to come back to us at all.
Just in my experience, I've never seen a 40B go back to the Planning Board for any reason.
The 40B wouldn't be coming back. It's the, it's the remaining site plan which has changed.
So are you saying that the building inspector wouldn't be giving them the go-ahead to build unless-
For the 40B?
Came back to the site plan?
No, the 40B can be built.
Okay.
But the site plan will be out of compliance to the, with the approved site plan. So they need a modification.
Which in a decision you can condition based on what's being provided and what's missing. The planning board, I believe, would have some ability to set some conditions, whether it's mitigation.
If it does actually have to come back for site plan.
No, not the 40B.
Yeah, not the 40B.
It has nothing to do with the 40B.
So if it comes back here, it's not going to be the 40B. It'll be the rest of the, that makes sense.
Oh, yeah.
Because you can't.
Oh, I understand that.
You can't change it.
The question is, you have this non-compliant site. Can it ever be compliant? Because it's been reduced and it has existing buildings on it, which require certain parking. And so they got their parking variance. So now the rest is, is, you know, codifying or having a record plan now that shows that the circulation works, you know, traffic impacts. It meets the parking based on the special permit variance allowed. I don't know with the site plan is, if the open space requirement is not a requirement for site plan per se.
I guess, Mimi, why does the, why does the proponent need to get site plan review once they have the 40B approved?
Because, so the site plan was on 20 acres or whatever that was. And that's the approved site plan. It had two buildings on it. And the whole residential portion of the lot was, I think eight acres was wooded. So when they cleave off the 6.2 and they cleave off the 3.5, they're left with a smaller lot that does not comply with that site plan that was approved. So they need to modify that for the 118, 120.
It's basically in order to record.
Yeah, but they, I mean, there are others, like landscaping and make sure the parking and
Does that help, Lisa?
Do others?
No, I'm, I'm, so I get that piece out, but my question is on, the original site plan had a condition. Does that condition go away? Do we now lose that condition on the modification?
Well, supposedly, they're going to
Address that condition.
Yeah, give that.
Your ZBA.
Yes. Well, not through ZBA. So that should have nothing to do with the 40B process, but it's being tied to that. And the proponent, once the 40B is approved, said that he will then donate that land.
So the land has nothing to do with the 40B. It goes back to the site plan.
That's, yeah.
So basically, yeah.
So maybe that's a question for town council. How can we make sure?
Yeah.
And, and how can we make sure it doesn't have drainage structures?
Well, see, that's it. Drainage, there's no trees, there's nothing. And for, again, as you said, for the town to take over, the 6.2 that's on the table is basically us doing their maintenance. That's how I view it anyway. So what do we just say? Fine, we don't want the 6.2. Or there's no 6.2 somewhere else for us to get it. So I guess that's my conundrum is, basically, do we just write it off? Because what's being offered is not what was the intention of the original site plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
So maybe that's a question for town council.
Mimi. Yeah, question. Just summarize it. It's
A, how do we ensure that that 6.2 gets donated?
The 6.2 from the original.
And B, how can we ensure the town isn't forced to take ownership of drainage structures? And has that condition been modified because they're denuding part of the 6.2 and putting drainage structures in it? Are those the questions?
Absolutely.
And has the
I went in about it from a very non-zoning point of view.
Has the 6.2 acres been?
Has the condition been modified because the 6.2 is not open space as defined in our code? Because it has been denuded and has drainage structures on it?
Denuded?
Denuded.
Denuded.
So Mimi, one more question then. So from like our open space commission side, where should they be advocating for this open space at? Here with us for our site plan modification or with the ZBA or both?
The ZBA.
Okay. Okay. So it lies more with ZBA than it's going to lie with us. Okay. Again, I'm trying to piece it all together.
Because they're doing a preliminary subdivision in, within the 40B permitting.
I'll tell you, this town is
It's clear as mud.
So wait, just out of curiosity, you brought something up earlier, which was the amount of information that's been uploaded to the ZBA website.
Yeah.
So is that stuff that was just recently introduced? Or was it administratively just recently uploaded?
Today, it was uploaded today, but it was from the 30th through today. But, I mean, it all got uploaded today because obviously the weekend. But it's like overwhelming, Jesse. Go to the link that Karina sent out today and it's the whole, like, there's like eight, maybe, maybe more different things, but they're huge. The site plan, I mean, I was overwhelmed looking at it, thinking, here we are tonight. We're not going to even be able to comment on any of that because there's just so much information and we don't meet again until December 2nd. And I think there's probably information in there that Planning Board would find very pertinent, you know, and would want to offer some suggestions.
This is like the best, this is such a good example of why 40B is imperfect.
It is. It is.
And that, beyond that, I don't know what else there is to say because
I agree.
And it's nothing personal. Like, this is, ZBA's don't do what we do. So.
I know. There's just, there's a lot of information to digest there for them.
That's state politics.
And, but anyway, thank you. Sorry, guys.
And they entertained closing the hearing on.
I can't. And looking at what there was.
So, are we good with that?
Yeah, I might have to touch base with her.
Well, Mimi, on that note, so, when is their meeting? Sorry, did you say the?
13th.
I mean, I don't know if ZBA is going to have enough time to get through all of that, but I
And it's all going to peer review.
Okay. I mean, I know they still need to hear from Conservation Commission. I think it's time we hear from Conservation Commission. I don't know if they show up to speak at
They did send a letter. And Lucas had wrote a letter. And he had a lot of comments. A lot of them were jurisdictional to conservation. So they have to go to conservation. So any of the state laws are not waived.
And on the website, there was responses to both of those letters as well in the listing of a thousand things.
Oh, okay.
So when I spoke to ZBA Lara on, last week, the goal was that they were to have submitted revised plans by last Friday, which would then go to the reviewing consultant who's supposed to have peer reviews done by the 8th. So that they can make the public hearing on the 13th. And that's a very aggressive, very aggressive. I think that's what was discussed.
LDC or something like that?
LDC.
Planners report.
Okay. No, that's okay. Let's see where I'm at here. Let me just put this back. Do we have minutes for tonight? No minutes, okay. Planners report. So Debbie, there's a question on your MAPC Planning Board representative to the MAPC. You were recommended to the select board. I thought they appointed you. You had a two-year term expiring in June 30th, 2025. We got an email from MAPC saying, we don't have any Southborough representatives on MAPC.
Doesn't make me feel very good. But this happens from time to time. So I'll get back in touch. It's the same person.
And they said it's a three-year term and they said there's an alternate too. So when I did hit the link and went to their website and it shows MAPP representative, Southborough has vacant and vacant. So we, just so you know, we'll figure it out. We'll get to the bottom if we work together on it. We'll get there.
Thank you.
Okay. We pass that. No minutes. Sorry. We gave you the budget calendar for fiscal year '26 with the town meeting date of Monday, April 7th. It's also in the Dropbox if you don't have it, but I think it's in your packet too. And key is that we just received the draft department budgets and they're due December 9th, back to the treasurer. And I was hoping a Planning Board member is some, anyone would work with me to just be there as the go-to bounce questions off person and then submit the revised budget for this year. All right.
What's the date? Isn't there a meeting with advisory that you have to attend?
Usually, planning doesn't have to because our budget is so
Okay.
It's Monday, December 9th, the budgets are due. And then they have joint meeting with Capitol Select Board and Advisory Tuesday, December 17th. And it's on, this is, if you don't have this
Yep, I have it.
And then the warrant opens Tuesday, December 17th.
Okay.
So we'll put a placeholder there for the warrant articles. Let's see. Proposed budgets reviewed by advisory and select board, February 2025, it just says, dates to be determined. And then the warrant closes March 11th.
And this is for fiscal '26. Is there, can I put just a, throw something in with the whole education and awareness? We talked about the bylaw. Can we maybe throw in some money for mailings, for scenic roads, awareness and that kind of stuff and just general Planning Board awareness stuff?
Yeah, we do have budget for Planning Board training and webinars. And then I usually carry some zoning amendment money and some mapping money, but we could, we could
Just a little, because I think about that ARPA money was really well-served to do mass mailings and information. And just something in there is what I'm saying.
And they're usually tied to zoning amendments. So
Yeah, perfect.
I do carry a budget there. We might have to just increase it a little bit and we'll work on it. And I'm going to still look at the budget. I'm almost there for this year to see if we have some for the ADU. I think we do. Okay. Colleen provided you an updated meeting schedules for 2025 and don't even look at the old one. It was tweaked.
I noticed precedence day was a meeting day.
Yeah, so Colleen, you printed up a new one in the packet, right?
Yeah, that's, you'll have the older one.
Yeah.
So here at the end. Yeah. No, it's this one. Keep hitting that. Sorry.
Is it, it's in tonight's packet?
Yeah, it's right before
Okay.
It's right before the warrant schedule. Yeah, there you go. So we tweaked it a little bit and there's an accompanying yearly calendar here. So just take another close look at it. If you want some more time, we can do this on December 2nd as well to make sure there's no conflict. But it's pretty evenly spaced with, during the summertime, we reduced it to one meeting in July and August. Generally, there's two in others. But just take a quick look and if you're not comfortable on voting on it tonight, we can do it December 2nd. Because you might want to check your schedules.
I checked it for the other ones.
Sorry. Yeah, when we looked at it today, it had the wrong town meeting on it.
Check all those things you want to do.
My only, the only thing that I would bring up is October. We only have one meeting slotted and I know it's difficult because we have Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is no longer recognized as a national holiday. Do we recognize that as a, oh, that's our heritage day? Like, it's just something to think about because I feel like November and October, like, stuff comes in at the end of the year usually. And like, we have such limited, we have one meeting in October, one meeting in November.
Yeah, so what we did this past year is we almost have 50% more meetings than we had because when something came up, there was a consensus to add a meeting.
Yep.
But generally, this
That was MBTA community.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of it was.
Yep, and we did one for, one for 250 Turnpike and I have them all listed on my bulletin board on my, on my wall.
Yeah, so we can always add one if needed.
And if you have any suggestions. But we, in November, there's one because there's always Thanksgiving week. And that's a tough week. It's similar to this year. So two, two.
Like, I get the light summer hours, you know, the light summer meetings. It's just, I, you know.
Well, if we put another one on October.
Yeah, it would be back to back with September. So I guess it just kind of depends on the flow.
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
And sometimes we even have a meeting not on a Monday. If something important comes up, the Planning Board says, let's, can we meet on Thursday instead or Wednesday when there's something specific?
So December 15th is the first day of Hanukkah? Is that?
No, usually it's it's the other holiday.
Let's come back and give perspective. Or can we wait till December?
Yeah, take a chance to just look at it because it's not carved in stone.
No.
We can fix it. We try, we avoid school vacation.
Not that any of us have kids in school anymore.
No, but it's the people who attend. We want, because they go on vacation.
I don't know, they're kind of on the older side.
Yeah. Okay. Next is Planners Report, sorry.
We have lost all our attendees.
You're losing your planning board team.
We already talked about that. Schedule. That's Planning Board meeting dates we did, the Planning Board budget, any meeting schedule. So we're in the process of, we got the National Grid Tree Removal Application PDF to us. So next week, Colleen and I will have a chance to look at it and see if it's complete. Maybe this week.
Well, I have a question too.
And then
So doesn't, did that go to Chris?
It went to Chris and he refined it and
Okay.
worked with them in order to provide a spreadsheet that is inclusive of all the tree policy requirements. So that now we can see if the application is complete. Once the application's complete, we let them know and that's when they'll post.
So I already have gone through it though and the trees match, a whole other thing. The question I have for you is what they did with the numbering, is it the trees that were wrong or take, or they did something else with, they took them out. It might go from 1, 2, 3, 7, 8, but they're the same numbers as the other one. And that's their spreadsheet. They just took, took them out one by one that they
They dropped the rows that they weren't including because some of them were on conservation land.
Yeah.
So instead of renumbering them from 1 to whatever, they kept the numbers from the original. I know that Mimi and I think Lisa went out and looked at the trees numbered.
113, was it, Lisa?
Yeah.
So
There is less this time, but not much.
If there's a preference to keep the numbering that way and just know that there's no number four, five, maybe it goes 1, 2, 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12, you know, I mean, it keeps the original number.
So they all still have the same tree number, the correct tree number. I've gone through and I've matched them all up.
So as long as the spreadsheet matches the packet with the pictures, matches what's put on the tree?
Yes.
Then that's good.
We can do that.
So Chris confirmed that they're all public shade trees. So those ones that were on conservation land have been taken out.
Okay, good. So I was just thinking that if they have to renumber them, they got to go back and do it if that's the case. do it, if that's the case.
So can I ask you a question? So this is the hazard trees, tree list?
Yes, this is the hazard tree list we've been trying to get to.
Has, yeah. So in my tree research, I found that some towns demand a hazard, let's see, they have a vegetative management plan, and they have a hazard tree plan or something. They call it the annual plan or something, a five-year.
Those are the two plans with National Grid.
So, but I think I, I thought, Mimi and I spoke about this, I thought they did not give us a hazard tree plan.
So.
We asked, but they haven't given it to us.
So per Mass General Law, the utility may, or they shall, if requested, submit the vegetation management plan and the hazard tree plan.
Right.
They have said they don't do a hazarded, hazardous tree plan. They do, just do the vegetation management plan, which is why they're coming for a hearing. So if we had an approved hazard tree plan, that they don't come for a hearing, like the vegetation management plan.
So I tried to look at other towns, see, I've not found that anywhere, but, I mean, it makes sense that they would come to us, but I would ask that before we accept the package, that first that they show us how it's a hazard tree. So there's a state definition of a hazard tree, and we know from looking at the previous list, and I'm sure some of them are going to be at the same trees, that, you know, they don't look like they're.
They're not calling them imminent hazard?
Imminent hazard and death.
They're not calling them that. This is just a tree application, it's kind of like a maintenance plan part two. It's just an in-house for National Grid, they call it their hazard tree program.
Right.
But they're not claiming these trees are imminent hazards, it's just an, it's a tree, a scenic road tree removal application with a list of trees.
And are they giving us an arborist report for every tree? Their own arborist?
Yes, and it's all on this same spreadsheet, and it's all on the pictures with all the identification for each tree.
Right, because when they first came in, they were missing some columns in that.
And it missed everything.
For the tree. They needed Chris Leroy's comments, they needed, they could do a row for their, a column for their own arborist, but they also had to have a column for Cliff Templeman's comments, the town's arborist.
So, so just so I understand, because this is a process question that I'm not really completely clear on, the, the utility company will give us their arborist, and they're using some sort of standard, you know, not just like tree dead, limb falling, have to cut, but they're giving us like an actual, like, arborist evaluation of some kind?
Yes, no, they are. They've looked at, so they've gone through.
Well, it says tree dead, limb fallen.
So that's not acceptable to me.
It's not, it's not on.
But Cliff Templeman has, is providing his response to what he thinks. So the town's arborist, so they just had, have a column. I haven't looked at it fully yet, but.
I saw the last one, and it was really skimpy, and Cliff doesn't.
Yes, that's, that was wrong.
Right.
So that was sent back.
Yeah.
And we made them follow the policy of what has to be in the spreadsheet. So there are these columns, and they just so happened to add their arborist, but the ones that are required are Chris Leroy's comments and the town's arborist's comments. And then the third column is kind of icing on the cake, so to speak.
And will we be alerted as to when Cliff is going out?
When the.
That is the intent.
Will be alerted to what?
When Cliff is going out?
Oh, they've all.
To look at the trees?
They've all made, made their notes on them. They're waiting for us to, and tell them what they need to say.
So we're real, we're off our plan.
Yeah, so that's what, yeah, right.
And I, this is really, I don't think we should accept the package.
What is not, what, what?
I don't know what you mean.
First of all, we provide, Mimi and Lisa put a lot of time into what the evaluation form would look like. The, no arborist is using that evaluation form, so we don't really have a form. They were using that forestry management form or something. Other towns have more simplified forms, and when we got together with Bill Kundoff and others, he said, no.
You mean the tree assessment form?
For the assessment, there needs to be some sort of scientific evaluation of why the tree needs, needs to come down. And we, we don't have that, and now we don't have the opportunity even speak to an arborist, and we're going to get 100 trees. This is just not acceptable.
I have to look at the application first. And then to, to, because I'm kind of speaking off the cuff.
Yeah.
Because I looked at it briefly, and those were the expectations that when I sent them back.
Yeah.
Chris Leroy says, like, you need to work this out first, because here's our policy. And I sent him the policy again.
Right.
So as far as the tree assessment report.
Yep.
I think for this round, and I, you know, we had a meeting, I think you were there, Debbie.
I was there.
And we agreed that at this point, we weren't going to, the, the tree warden designee was not comfortable filling out a tree assessment because of liability concerns.
Right.
So it was, we were going to forego that requirement for actual tree assessment form for each tree, but that they would put in the tree list spreadsheet Chris Leroy's as the tree warden designee's findings, and the town's arborist's findings. And it just so happens that National Grid provides their own arborist findings as well, so there would be these three columns.
So in the tree policy, 2C, trees that are not dead, which means no life, no leaves, require an arborist evaluation and recommendation, and that's Cliff. Notification of the tree warden, select board, and notification of the planning board for trees located on scenic roads, which notification shall include the date and time the arborist evaluation will take place.
Oh, yes, we're going to definitely push with it. That's a requirement.
They've already, they've already done all this.
Well, we have to see it.
Oh, 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 oh.
It's not acceptable that we have no opportunity to speak to an arborist.
Yeah, this is the same.
I have a couple of copies I'm happy to share with you, if you just want, they're just draft.
No, no, I mean, we have to follow the policy that's put into place, and this is not going to be solved like tonight, and it's not going to be solved with the bylaw or anything else. We have to just push. If that's what it says, and I'm not saying it should say that or shouldn't say that, but we've always had the opportunity.
I see what you're saying.
And now we have DPW telling us we don't have the opportunity? That's not acceptable. We shouldn't accept the package.
DPW has nothing to do with this, other.
No, I was there at the meeting. I know that it was, it appeared to be, you know, Bill saying it's, it's not reasonable, and Chris had also said, gee, you know, he goes out when he can, when we, everybody tried to be reasonable. I was just a listener, I wasn't participating, but yes, everybody wants to make it like, you know, be, appear reasonable and that, you know, we're not trying to make it onerous on anybody, but now we're completely shut out of the process. That wasn't the case. So if I understand correctly, you have three columns that are already filled in.
Yes, and we did make an attempt and corresponded with requesting that the planning board be notified. So as it turns out, Cliff is a one-man show.
Mm-hmm.
And he goes out at the spur of the moment when he can, and he goes to certain things. And not that it's an excuse, I'm just explaining, this is what it is, this is how it is.
So this policy had worked a couple of times in the past. We were able to get this to work. And when they didn't, when they cut it out, cut us out of this, then the meeting.
Fell apart.[1747.41]